I believe it is seven oh one over there. I'm calling from Germany, so. Good, good to see everybody. I'll try to be here with the meeting. I'm dealing with some, some health issues over here as well, but I. I value everyone's time and want to dedicate as much as I can to you all as well. So I just want to get. Call this meeting to order and get us started because I know it's a, it's a full agenda. And yes, you can thank me for that. So. Hopefully whoever the new chair is can whip through it and get it all handled. So I would ask maybe someone can uh read the rules of speaking and we can get started.
Aloha. This is your community public forum. Your input and cooperation are really appreciated. The Eva Neighborhood Board is an advisory board. And we provide fairness, integrity and collaboration to all to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise their hand and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under one minute, one turn per person. Those giving reports are urged to keep their reports less than three minutes and presentations under 10 minutes. Oh, by the way, please silence all electronic devices. I just did mine, so. Video teleconference. The board will make a good faith effort to provide the public with opportunity to observe the meeting as it happens and an opportunity to provide oral testimony. Without a physical presence in a physical meeting room along with Chair Protem Alex. Please ensure that your computer or phone is muted unless you are speaking for those of you that are dialing in. Note, the board may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two thirds vote, which is eight of this 11 member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they are of major importance and will affect a significant number of people.
Thanks for that, John Clark. Um, so now we'll do introduction of board members. Do you want to start, John, since, since you were on the mic?
Aloha, everyone. My name is John Clark the third.
Hi, John Rogers.
Aloha, Corey Rosenlee.
Good evening, Zachary Espino.
Evening, Mike Plowman.
Hello, Noah Borja.
Good evening, Charmaine Valario.
Do we have additional individuals online? I can't see Jeffrey, do you know?
Yeah, it's just on you online, Alex.
Okay, then I guess um, I think we move directly, if I'm not mistaken, we move directly on to election of officers. So uh, if we have some nominations and I think we're only doing for, for, for uh, for chair, correct?
That's correct.
Yep.
Uh, I nominate John, John Clark uh as the chair.
I second.
Thanks for that. Any additional nominations?
I guess we should nominate Mitchell as well.
Okay, Mitch, do we get a second? Okay, if we don't have a second, then uh.
Please use your mic.
I'll second it, I'll second it for the sake of having a fair trial, but disappointing not to see him here, but anyway, okay. So I'm. So we'll uh.
Okay, so we're gonna do. We're gonna do the roll call vote uh for the two names. Um, against, please use your microphone just for the sake of the, the roll call vote is for accuracy and everything. Um, and I'll do one time through just to double check. Uh, there are no other board members online other than uh Board Member Gauss. Uh, so when I call your name, please say the last person of the person that you would like to take the seat. Um, again, just a reminder, just in case, it's Clark and Ty Nanas.
Uh, the nominees have a chance to speak first.
That's, yeah, that's probably fine. If you can say a few words if you wish.
Aloha, community and board members. Uh, Chair Protem, my name is John Clark. Uh, I previously served as Chair this past um term. Uh, I like to um. Uh, agree with the, my nominations. I believe this board has done a great deal of good in the community. Uh, Mitch was Chair for, I guess about nine or 10 years. But I guess in a sense of parody, maybe I should be allowed to be Chair one more time, but. Uh, I don't want it to be a personality contest or anything like that. Just want to share a small story. Um, when my wife and I first moved to Ever Beach about 15, 20 years ago, gets closer to 16. Um, she kind of complained about what was going on at Ever Beach Elementary School. I told her, don't complain, get involved. Um, after about five or six times of me coming home from work, our, our two youngest daughters were at Ever Beach Elementary. Uh, I challenged her to get involved again and she did. She volunteered so much at the school that they actually offered her a job there. Several months later, I was watching Hawaii News Now and a few of the other K I T V stations. And I was a little frustrated what was going on in our community. Uh, so I complained to her and she flipped the script on me and said, don't complain, get involved. That was in 20. Twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, and I've been on the, the Eva Neighborhood Board ever since. I first started serving as Chair. I was Vice Chair for quite a while. But I believe that uh, as the, the rules of speaking say, this provides us an opportunity uh for the community to talk directly to our elected officials. Uh, I will say that one of the things that probably is different between Mitch and I is. I tend to, I think, hold our elected officials to a higher standard. Some of them come here. And they kind of run roughshod over our meetings. I don't think that's really fair. When I go to the state Capitol and I provide testimony. Um, I have to respect the rules of that forum. Uh, I think the same should be done here. So um, with that, um, I guess I'll close. Thank you.
Thanks, John. That's great. Um, and I don't think we have Mitch, so we don't, we don't have any other presence, so we won't have words from him. And I guess we'll just go ahead and take a vote. Yeah, Jeff?
Yeah, that's correct. So just to clarify, Board Member doesn't necessarily have to be present to receive a vote and nomination. So the board can still vote for them if they wish. If Board Member Ty Nanas is voted. The Vice Chair would continue running the meeting just because he is not present. If I know that you'll be on for just a short amount of time. Uh, Board Member Gauss, so then it would, the Gauss would be passed to John Rogers here in the physical meeting space. Just wanted to put that on the record.
Thanks for that.
Okay, so when I. Alright, so um, without further ado, please use your microphone. Uh, Board Member Plowman?
So Alex can have to run another meeting. Mitchell. Sorry, Ty Nanas.
Okay. Board Member Valario?
Clark.
Alrighty, uh, Board Member Gauss online.
Clark.
Board Member Borja?
Clark.
Board Member Espino?
Clark.
Board Member Rogers?
Clark.
Board Member Rosenlee?
Clark.
And let me go through just to make sure we don't have any, but any other board members that are online that are tuning in last minute. That is a, for the record, that is a count of. Seven to one in favor of Board Member Clark, who will be the Chair for the uh, this board term. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, board members. Appreciate it. With that, I guess we'll move on to the next item. Alex, you are relieved, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
From here, we'll move on to public safety first responder reports. We have Hawaii Fire Department online. No, not online.
Okay, one second. Um, even though there's no physical presence of HPD, they did provide a report. And I'll get the stats up in just one moment for everybody. Okay, so for the incident statistics for July twenty twenty five. Uh, structure fires, they had one. Wildland brush, they had two. Deucen's fires, they had four. Uh, no cooking fires and six activated alarms. Uh, one hundred eighty six medical emergencies. Uh, one motor vehicle collision with pedestrian, nine motor vehicle crash slash collisions. And one hazardous materials incident. Uh, their fire safety tip for the month is emergency notifications and resources. Um, understanding how you'll be alerted during urgent emergencies and knowing where to find accurate official information is a key part of being prepared. Learn more at honolulu.gov slash D E M slash stay dash informed, alert and alert methods, opt-in alerts. These notify individuals who have signed up to receive alerts via text, email or app push notifications based on user preferences. Alerts are not sent based on location. Systems include H N L Alert and official government social media. Sign up at hnlalert.gov to receive notifications. Alerts may be shared by official city, state and trusted partner accounts. Public Alert and Warning Systems. These systems deliver urgent life-saving information during immediate threats to public safety. In Hawaii, this includes Emergency Alert System, also known as E A S, Wireless Emergency Alerts. Uh, acronym W E A. Outdoor warning sirens depending on the emergency. And one or more of these systems can be activated at any point in time. And that is the report.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Honolulu Police Department, HPD. Online, okay.
You're up. Board Chair, members, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear. Thank you.
Hi, Sergeant Fumi from uh District Eight Community Policing. Uh, I have the monthly report for the month of July. Uh. In the district, we had twenty-three motor vehicle thefts, uh, five in Eva. Uh, fourteen burglaries in our district, two in Eva. Uh, one hundred and ten thefts, uh, twenty-two in our area. Uh, unauthorized entry into motor vehicle, uh, seventeen in the district. Uh, one in our area. Uh. Officers issued one thousand three hundred fourteen uh citations in the month. Total calls for service in our district was nine thousand one hundred eleven. Uh, two thousand seven hundred and thirty calls in Eva Beach area. Uh, one announcement I wanted to make is we have a District Eight gun buyback operation taking place tomorrow. It's not in Eva, but. It is taking place at One and Police Station. Uh, between nine AM and three PM. Um. We are only taking uh vehicles, dropping off guns, no walk-ins, uh, no questions asked. Uh. Department of Law Enforcement is our partner for this event. Uh, they are providing uh gift cards, a hundred dollars for uh normal rifles. Uh, single action, uh semi-auto and automatic uh firearms, two hundred dollars. Uh, we're trying to get some guns off the streets. Uh, so that's what we're doing tomorrow. Uh, and we're not taking any ammo. Uh, just the guns for tomorrow's event. Uh, take any questions you have at this time.
With that, any questions from members of the board? John Rogers?
Uh, thank you, Officer, for everything you do. Um, just one question is, there's a couple of business road signs around Evo, uh, around Renton Road. There's one actually. On Renton Road on, on a fence and then also in the middle of Fort Weaver in that area. And I'm just wondering, is that allowed? They're like pretty big banners and they're advertising a business, a private business. And I, I just didn't know that. Um, I didn't, I don't know for sure if that's allowed. I, I thought it wasn't. Um, but thank, uh, that's, that's my question.
Okay, thanks for the question. Um. We'd have to take a look into it. Um, if you can give me the specific location. Um, we can take a look. It depends on if it's a private or a public property too, so.
Okay, so, so it's Renton Road, um, at, at Fort Weaver. It's on, it looks like a private fence, um, but it's a big banner saying that, you know. Some kind of uh business. I can't remember exactly what it was. And then there's at Renton Road and Fort Weaver. Um, in the median, um, there's a big sign um on the northbound uh lane that you can see when you're driving on a northbound lane. Uh, um, pass, just pass Renton Road on Fort Weaver. There's a big banner there too. Thank you.
Yeah, I can take a look at that. Uh, well, I'll drive by there uh hopefully tomorrow. Um. Maybe um after the gun buyback. I can uh. Take a swing in. Uh, but I'll have an answer for you at the next meeting for sure. Yeah, thank you for the question.
Thank you, sir. Alex, you're up.
Yeah, thank you and thank you Sergeant Fumi for the, the buyback. That's something I'm glad to hear. You guys are holding that. I had a question. So I, I live right next to Eva Beach Road and two weeks ago. Um, about a dozen vehicles were ticketed for parking and they were all. They were parking where they've been parking for the last forty years. And so it was basically in front of their home on the dirt. On the dirt, uh, Common Walk, if you will, or I don't know what, what the reference is, but um. So I, you know, I was asked to ask why my. Was ticketed, but a bunch of them were. And again, these are people that have lived there forever. And so there were some frustration, also some concern that. You know, that they, that, that is where they parked. They don't have really any other options. And so they're concerned that they're going to get tickets again. Is there someone, can you find someone or is there someone that I can contact to find out why that happened and, and what the deal is?
Uh. Yep, thanks. Thanks for the question. Um, I believe I did hear about um complaints uh from the neighborhood because of the. Uh, construction going on, the um parking is limited in that area on the street. I'm not sure where that is uh as far as parking on the dirt. Is that uh? Let's see. So we did uh receive a complaint about uh street parking as far as illegal parking and. Uh, you know, vehicles with expired tax and safety and uh that those vehicles. Uh, are in violation and uh we were asked to do the enforcement. Um. I think um our team did go over there and uh issued citations in the area that was complained about. So anytime anybody from the public makes a complaint. Uh. We do try and go down there, take a look at it and uh do enforcement. Uh, so. Uh, I'm not sure if that's the.
Yeah, so I, I do have, I do have like, I do have photos of the vehicle where it was and where it's been parked for the last couple of decades, where they've been parking and. And the date and all the ticket infraction numbers. So I don't know if there's someone I can share to clarify in particular.
What, what, what road was it, Fumi? Where, where was it? Ever Beach Road?
Oh, Ever Beach Road. I'm sorry. I think it's at Fort Weaver.
Ever Beach Road?
Near Ever Beach Road. That's a.
Ever Beach Road.
Unimproved sidewalk.
I, I can talk about it.
Yes.
So, so basically we got a complaint forwarded from. Somebody, somebody made a complaint with uh Department of Transportation Services, so DTS, about traffic safety in the area. And um, DTS, as a normal protocol, when they go out to do a site survey. If these violations, they automatically forward the complaint to us for enforcement. So basically, DTS went out because they got a traffic safety concern or complaint. And when they went out to do a site survey. For various concerns that a resident brought up, they notated that there were numerous vehicles parked on an unimproved um sidewalk. And so they forwarded the complaint to us. This is all through the mayor's office, yeah? And so we had to address the complaint because these complaints are trapped and we have to forward response back to the mayor's office. So in other words, somebody in that street or in that neighborhood complained about these vehicles parking there. And so if somebody complains about it, we have to cite them. And I know, I know that road because I actually talked to somebody about this before. Um, uh, another politician called me about this particular um. And I know people have been parking there for years. And there's not much parking available and they were bringing up concerns like there's no signs. Um, but um, it is what it is. The signage for unimproved sidewalk, there, there is no requirement for signage because. It doesn't matter where you are on the island. If it's an unimproved sidewalk, you're not supposed to park there. It's not, it's different from a no parking zone. A no parking zone requires signage like, okay, no parking from here to here, you know, but um. For that area, it's all unimproved sidewalk on that particular road. And then I think some neighbors were pointing out like they were getting tickets. So they're like, oh, what about that car? Or they have expired this or they have expired that. So the officer's like, okay, well, we're going, we're going to cite everybody for that. So it's like if somebody complains to us that there's violations, we can't just cite one car. So unfortunately, I heard a whole bunch of cars on that road got citations and people got upset, but. Like if somebody makes a complaint about it, we cannot go, oh, we're not gonna do anything about it. And that road I know is unfortunately. What's the solution? There's a lot of houses there. There's a lot of families there. People have been using that for years. They have many cars in their household. I get it. We understand. But um, it was something that we had to address and. People can continue to make complaints and then we're gonna have to continue to do tickets and stuff. If, does that answer the question? Was that, was that the um? The concern?
It's a good, it's an answer. I don't, I mean, I, I don't want to carry, I know John Clark needs to move on. It's just, that's right in front of people's homes. I don't, like you said.
I know.
They don't really have options, but I get it. I get it. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Lieutenant, and thank you, Alex, for the deferment there. Appreciate it. Uh, I believe we had one more question, Mr. Plowman?
I live on Ever Beach Road and my only complaint is the people who are parking in the road and it's happening a lot, but um. Uh, my question is, there was a fireworks buyback recently. I'm wondering if you have any intentions of uh doing that again?
What is that? Uh, sorry, fireworks buyback?
Yes, you guys had a fireworks buyback and I'm wondering if you're planning on doing another one?
Uh, currently there's no plans for another one right now. But um, I'll definitely make that suggestion if, if that's what you're.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Stay safe. Oh, wait, wait. Questions from the community. I know we talked quite a bit on this, but uh, questions for the community. Say your name, sir, please.
Aloha, Mr. Clark. Even after you residents of Ever Beach. Question for HPD. First of all, thank you to all you board members for volunteering your time. We appreciate you. Okay? Uh, second, thank you to the first responders, okay, for all the hard work you guys do. Uh, first question is uh. As you know, we stay in when hurricane uh season right now. We just had the tsunami. I wanted to ask uh HPD if they had any uh disaster plans or preparation, God forbid, in case we run into one. As uh I watched the news, in downtown traffic, everything was all clogged up, so I gotta assume we never have nothing. Okay, the other thing is the crime rate. Would you say it has gone up? Or is it even or has it gone down? And uh, Chair Clark. Aloha, my brother. Uh, I had two questions and a request from HP uh for the fire, but they're not here. But I'd like to put them in only because uh it's a matter of record, right? Uh, Fire Department, uh, thank you for all the hard work you guys do. Recently, we had a hybrid bus burn on eight, eight eleven Middle Street. If they can uh. They, we have two gates here, but they chained up one of them so the fire trucks could only go in and out to one of them. Okay? For people to fire. And uh. Same question was the hurricane and uh disaster plan for fire and uh. If the brush fires has increased in Eva. Uh, I, I don't know these things, so I think I asked the question, but thank you for this.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Okay.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear. Can you hear us?
Yes, now I can. Sorry, got cut off. But um, yeah, thank you for the um support and kind words. And your questions. Uh, first one was, I believe, uh, as far as uh natural disasters, we're in hurricane season. Uh, just like we had the. Tsunami evacuation uh a few weeks ago. Yes, we do have uh pretty good plans in place. Uh, of course, every situation is different, so. You know, depending on what the situation is, we act accordingly. We have uh communication with all the partners, city, state. And uh federal as well. Um, Department of Emergency Management, we, once we get. A word of any kind of natural disaster possibility, we work with our partners and uh we alert the public. Uh, send out messages and uh. We'll uh do evacuations if necessary. We'll um. Go out to the streets and do traffic control and um do evacuation notices if that's necessary, whatever it takes, uh, we're gonna do it. And uh, the second. Sorry, what's that? Uh, second question was uh. Has the crime rate gone down since COVID? We um. We see that the crime rate has gone down since COVID. Um. Even though you might think otherwise because of what the media puts out. Um, the crime rate has gone down. We've gone over the numbers uh with the prosecutors as well and. Uh, the, the crime rate has gone down. Yeah.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Uh, honolupd.org, we have uh crime mapping available. If you go to that site and go into the app, uh, you can look up specific crimes and um see the numbers, so. So just go in there.
Appreciate your time, sir. Stay safe. Moving on to Ever Weeding Seed.
I'll have that.
Hold on, we have one more question from the committee.
Hello, Sergeant and committee. Uh, my name is Joel Connor. Uh, I just had a real quick question. It's every time the HPD or the officers are called out to a site. Is there a dispatch log for every single call that goes out? That's something they have to keep records and track of that?
Absolutely. Yes, every call for service. Um, or every time an officer calls off. At a um incident or check of a park or anything like that, they do call off. Um, every call for service, they have to give a disposition on, on the call. So uh depending on what kind of complaint, they will um report what they found and what action they took. That's all on record.
Do you have a follow-on question? How, how do you have access to it? Is that what you want?
Yeah, how would you access that? And also would, does it show like date, time?
Right.
And action taken?
So as we wrap this up, Sergeant, if you could let us know how the residents could access that information? And it, and, and as a log, I would presume that it has a date and time, everything stamped, uh, and what the resolution is. So how, how do residents access that information? Do they have to come to HPD or is it, they can go online to get that?
I believe they can go onto the same website, honolupd.org and uh request for records. Uh, as long as the case is not still under investigation and it's closed, then they'll be able to provide all that information. Uh, in a.
Okay.
Report.
Okay. Thank you, Sergeant. Stay safe, sir. Oh, actually, no, it's gonna do Ever Weeding Seed. Is this something?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Wrap up in about twenty-two seconds?
Yep. So only thing we have to report is that uh we have a legacy luncheon uh coming up November fourteenth. That's uh for the benefit of uh. Our uh nonprofit, uh, Weeding Seed Hawaii, uh, to keep it going and provide services to Eva Beach.
And where is that at?
Uh, it's gonna be Okinawan Center, St. Pliss. Uh, it's an annual event. So, thank you for.
Tickets available to the public?
Uh, you don't need tickets, uh, I believe. Yeah.
Okay, and that's November fourth, you said?
Uh, November fourteenth.
Fourteenth, okay.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your service. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number four, Board Administration and Planning. Uh, approval of the initial convening minutes. Any corrections?
I moved to approve the minutes.
Okay. Board Member Rosenlee, did you have a thought on that? No? Okay, good. Okay. No? Okay, good. Okay. So moved.
Second.
We have a second. Okay, and now we have the first of uh, three considerations to adopt resolutions, excuse me, four. Uh, considerations to adopt resolutions. I'll read the title of the first one, and I would like to remind board members, we have four considerations to adopt resolutions and we have four presentations tonight. And for those of you that have been on the board a while, you know, that's, this is gonna take some time. So uh, to make sure that our elected officials get uh, some fair time and to make sure we leave the library before midnight. Uh, if we could uh have some actively engaging conversation and move it along. Uh, so the first one is consideration to adopt resolution, urgent immediate action to improve traffic and pedestrian safety at Holomoa Elementary School. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, I did submit this resolution for consideration tonight. And so we do know that Holomoa Elementary is one of the busiest schools in our area. It is also one of the, I think, few multi-track schools in the state. So we know that the school is operating on a year-round basis. And that during drop-off and pickup, it's been a safety hazard. And I know the board has been discussing this for many meetings now. And that cars have been making illegal left turns despite the signs, delineators being damaged and the traffic uh, cutting through in many ways that put our students at risk. And I'm speaking to this, uh, the road on Keal Nui Drive. And that we've had kids stepping off of the curb with cars turning right in front of them. We've seen cars blow through the broken barriers like they're never there. So really, this resolution is a formality and calls for the common sense fixes. So better no-left-turn signage and enforcement, repairing the barriers and delineators, of course, exploring permanent options and making sure that we're partnering with the school and HPD to make sure that we're raising awareness and enforcing. So the bottom line is, you know, this is, we need to make sure that our kids are safe and we need to make sure that they're going to school safely and on time. And, you know, I just wanted to uh, update the board and the community that I just got notice that Holomoa Principal Bonilla and Representative Reyes Ora have been able to secure funding through the state's Department of Transportation Safe Routes to School Program. And so right now, out of the ranking, I believe the funding for the, for the project is number four. I'm not sure how big the list is. Um, but to amend the resolution to add that we would like to make sure that the city, in partnership with the city, that we can expedite the funds unnecessary um, and work on the project. Um, so bottom line is, I think this is a great resolution to support the community, especially near, near uh, Holomoa Elementary and um, hopefully the board can support this tonight.
I move that the Neighborhood Board supports the resolution as written. Did you want an amendment? And you'll write the amendment? Uh, with amendment?
Second.
Um, so the, the resolution is linked to the agenda. It's also the, the neighborhood's um, Google Drive. So for the public to access, this has been, um, part of the drive for the better part of a month. So it has definitely been socialized quite a bit. Cory?
Please, go ahead. Give, give him the mic.
Okay, I move that the amendment be added to the main motion.
Second.
So for the first, so to approve, the motion to approve the amendment has been seconded. Um, Chair, we could simply, with the, we do have quorum, if you want to simply do a voice vote for the approval of the amendment and that we can do a voice vote for the, for the approval of the adoption of the resolution.
Yes. We'll do a voice vote for the amendment. And then we'll do a second vote, voice vote. Yes. On your mark.
Alrighty, so um yes, sir.
The release of funds and also partnering with the city. The City Department of Transportation, since the jurisdiction lies with the city.
Of course. Thank you, Board Member Espino. So for the first one, to, to the, to approve the amendment for the resolution, all board members in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Good to go. Uh, so to the next one, next voice vote is to adopt, for the Ever Beach Neighborhood Board, number twenty-three, to adopt the resolution with the proposed amendment of expediting the funds and including the city's Department of Transportation Services. All in favor, please say aye.
Point of order.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution. It was a resolution read.
Yes.
Okay.
And we read it.
Would you mind clarifying what you're asking? Okay, so for the
We can't hear what he's, we can't hear what he's clarifying.
Board Member Rosalie has a question and Board Member Palmer had a question, uh, a procedural question about discussion of the um, the resolution. Uh, but what we had offered initially was to vote on the amendment and the subsequent resolution. So it was understood that there would be no discussion. But, I mean, that's, because it was, it was the amendment to expedite.
As long as we're doing it right.
Okay. We are doing, doing it right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Palmer. We will proceed with the voice vote.
Okay, so all in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Chair, back over to you.
Thank you, Board Members. Thank you, Jeffrey. And thank you, Mr. Palmer, for that point of order. It's always good to have a active discussion to make sure we get it right. Okay, uh, we're ready for Holomoa. Moving on to item number four, C, consideration to adopt the resolution, acknowledging community engagement regarding a proposed offshore aquaculture.
Yeah. Chair, if I could say some words.
Was that, was that Alex?
Yeah, that was me. Sorry, the connection's breaking. I just, can it, can it, Chair, can I have uh, two minutes just to give some context to this updated version?
Uh, one minute fifty-eight seconds, Alex.
Perfect. So the, I just want all the board to know that when I, the the chair from, to the temporary chair, I was uh, engaging with Neil because we had previously expressed concerns about supporting something outright that we didn't re, you know, really know the details of as of yet. And so we kind of came to a common ground that rather than s, boy, you know, uh, something verbally saying we support it, we're ba, basically just saying that we've, listen, we've heard his proposal, uh, we, we want to continue to be engaged and, and that's it, rather than voicing support for the project. And he's, he's amenable to that. And I think that, that makes it much, it's kind of a win-win, uh, even though he, I'm sure he wanted us to shower it with roses. So that's, that's the context on it.
You still have one minute and nineteen seconds left, Alex.
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to save you time.
Okay, thank you, uh. Board Member Ga, is it, is it, is it Vice Chair? Vice Chair, thank you, Vice Chair Gauss. Uh, so to dovetail, and for the community, for the benefit of everyone here, uh, we had a commercial entity that wanted us to give a, basically a resolution of support. That's what I mean by it started last term and it kind of bled over into the new term. Uh, there's been some discussion. We have to be careful with sunshine laws here, so we wanted to make sure everything was transparent and, and in the open. But we really didn't ferret out enough of the project. The project is still in early development. So to Vice President Gauss's point, uh, we would rather not give a complete um, stamp of approval. Uh, that's, that's really not in the business of the, of the board at this point. So with that, um, do I have a motion to withdraw the?
Okay, the, um, the resolution, I, if I can be, be resolved, yeah. But no, that's what he said. The, the board acknowledges uh, Ocean Era's presentation regarding a proposed offshore agricultural project off Ever Beach and expresses interest in remaining engaged and informed as the project develops and moves through the regulatory process. So that, I, I think this is the right answer. Yeah. And then, yeah, no endorsement. The board affirms the importance of transparency, community input, and comprehensive environmental review prior to the, considering any formal position on the project. The board encourages continued communication between Ocean Era, the board, the broader community, and supports efforts to keep stakeholders informed about opportunities for input throughout the permitting process. Um, and then be it finally resolved that we, we spread copies out throughout the world. So I move that we support this resolution as written.
A second.
Point of order.
It was, however, uh, Board Member Palmer has a point of order. I think I know where he's going with this.
Discussion.
Discussion, yes. Okay.
So every, well, everybody needs to have an opportunity to make a comment. Uh, I do have a question.
Board Member, Palmer?
Uh, for Neil, uh, I read today that uh, in one of your emails that the EA, the environmental assessment was rejected. Is that, is that correct? And if so, what's the status on that?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to uh, speak to you. Uh, the EA was considered incomplete because they said that they wanted more public input. And so for the last year, we've been engaging more actively with the board here, with a couple of the board and with everybody except the Boy Scouts, trying to just have that active outreach there. Appreciate very much working with uh, Vice Chair Gauss to be able to draft this. It's not an expression of support. It's just acknowledging that we have been that's very fulsome in our outreach and we intend to continue to do that. Because as we go forward with this process, we understand we're using community ocean space for this operation. It's going to be out near where the Moy Farm was previously. And we want to be uh, receiving community input as we go through the process. It's still a lengthy state permit review process and then federal permit review process that's yet to come. If I may, just also invite anybody that's going to be at the Made in Hawaii Festival in the next few days. Come by our booth. We'll have some free samples there for you all. Look forward to seeing you. Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you for the point of order, uh, Board Member Palmer. Any other board members? Wish to express uh, some discussion on this? No? Okay. Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm getting there, Cory. Uh, members of the community, uh, if you would like.
I don't know how else to bring it to you other than, than to appear, you know, appeal to your just the, the common sense in the heart that as I mentioned before, so there's more people now, when if you allow this in, they're in Kona, yeah, the Ocean Tech Park. You allow this and it's a Pandora's box. You're gonna allow for-profit in the Ever Beach Limu management area. The concept is good for aquaculture, for EA, you know, and Neneo Limu, right? But it's gonna be for-profit. So instead of um, you know, raising this limo for the, the community to harvest, now you're gonna have it in the ocean. They're gonna need space around, you know, and I'm not an ocean person, but I have been in every meeting and hearing the concerns of, you know, shoreline and just even the fishing. Now it's gonna be out there. I just saw today a person in the Va'aa and he goes, he paddles, you know, around all the sides of the islands. He imagined being there.
Please address your comments to the chair.
Oh, sorry. So can you imagine being there in the Va'aa? So beautiful watching his video today. And to have that there and knowing, for example, like sea asparagus, it's, you know, being grown, right? How many of you are able to afford it? So this EA and this limo, is it affordable? Again, it's for-profit. You have to change the mindset. So I just really hope that those on the board, you really adopt until preventative instead of too late. Yeah, that decolonize your mindset. It's the people and the environment over profit. And what this is gonna do, it's for-profit. And you look at Ocean Era in Kona, you're not able to access the area because it's filled with all for-profit businesses. It's a good concept, but no, so I just wanted to say, my, my end, last statement is, you can even just say, I understand this, to have community engagement, but that's how things get passed through. So just rather just say, no, you don't, you don't approve it.
Thank you, Chair.
Mahalo.
Chair David Aki, resident. Regarding this limo thing, I'm against it. Bottom line is, I was here in the sixties dropping net out there in the ocean, okay? Limo was choco here. Had so much limo. Had five different types we could eat, okay? Now the coral dead. Yeah. Now brother wants to put a farm out there. What else we gonna do? Okay? How is it gonna impact the land? Will it need space for put all the equipment? I don't know these things. But I'm gonna tell you right now. The little, the little bit we get of Ever Beach Ocean, we gotta save. Yeah. And I get nothing against it, but I love limo. Put them someplace else. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Aki. Any other comments?
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the uh, board, members of the community. Oio farms, outside. Where is all these fish gonna come from? We live off the ocean, the people here. We have such a beautiful ocean. We've, we live off of it every day. To have these kind of things, I oppose that because what's gonna happen, it's gonna get crowded out there. Is it this for profit or for learning? Pick one. What is it? I understand where you're coming from. But this is all we get is our ocean. We here live off the ocean every day. We fish. What kind of farm is it?
Cory, please address your comments to the chair.
We already have our Moy or Oio. Let me tell you what happened to our um, limo. Is when they redirected the fresh water back towards the golf course. When you mix fresh water with ocean water, it causes mechanism that grows the limo throughout the shoreline. When they capped it and turned it backwards, everything died. My dad was one of the pickers that paid our rent with that. So I know what's going on out there. To have that, sir, out there, we as a surf club oppose that. Because it's our fishery. Then you're gonna have more farms, more farms, more farms. It's not, it's not gonna be a good sight out there. We need to keep what we have. Little that we have. Right? Ever Beach Surf Club, mahalo.
Thank you, Cory. Appreciate it. Any other comments from members of the community?
Uh, Aloha Kako Kele Akana, formerly Kele Taylor. Uh, many of you guys probably know my grandfather, Pops Taylor. I was born and raised in Ha'apush. I graduated from high school at Kamehameha. I went to America. I came back about eight years ago. Hawaii is so different. I remember walking on the beach in Piki Limu. I remember the water waves being open. And coming home after being gone for so long. I, I do wanna meet with the gentleman because I still wanna talk with him because I wanna see what their idea was about. Because I don't really know, just to be honest. But what I do know is everything has been destroyed. The coral has been ground up for profit. People are fighting for need to reorganize our statistical data and analysis of what's going on and choose the people in the communities and natural solutions versus just profit because somebody willing to pay for somebody else to make something cool. The budget has to be more thought through. Because I grew up here. This is where I'm from. I went away, I came back, and it is not better than when I was younger. And I'm gonna fight to make sure that we get things right over here. Okay? Mahalo.
Mahalo. Okay. Any other comments? Uh, Chair? Chair? Okay, at this point, we're gonna take a quick, we have some technical difficulties with our online connection. So we're gonna take a quick, uh, probably about a four or five minute recess. Uh, allow our, uh, resident expert, no pun intended, uh, to get things going again. Thank you. And we will reconvene. Thank you for coming back. Thank you for being respectful of our time. Uh, so we last held us discussing this, um, this resolution. There's a couple of points I wanna make here. The resolution is about supporting the engagement of the commercial entity. It's not about supporting the commercial entity. That's an important distinction. The second point that I'd like to make here is that we're an advisory board. Uh, neighborhood boards don't really have any real power. Um, the, the power is really in the community. And, and you come in here and effectuating your voice through this panel, like, much like what Cory did, uh, at the, at the lectern there and others, Tara, speaking your voice. But I wanna make it clear that this resolution as it's written, it supports the engagement of the commercial entity. It doesn't support what they're doing. So I wanna make that clear. Okay? I mean, anyone could come here and ask, okay, can you support our engagement? We're not gonna say no unless it's outright illegal or something like that. So that pretty clear? John, did you wanna make a final statement or anything? Was that good? Was that good enough?
So just one more statement about this is, is that there's a lot of the process, um, that has to still take place before this ever comes to be. So, um, and there's gonna be, the whole point of that process is for community input. So everyone here will have, um, the, your opportunity to give your input to this, um, farming, uh, venture. And so that's, I think, um, I just believe that we should move forward with it.
Move forward with this, the
With the resolution.
To support the engagement, not to support the activity.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, with that, uh, Jeffrey, should we do a voice vote or?
And Chair, Chair, sorry, this is Alex. One, one last thing on that, if you, if I may.
Yes, please.
Is, that's the whole point of this whole rewrite. If you saw earlier versions of this resolution, it was much more supportive. And, and, you know, with all due respect to Neil, I know he's a little disappointed in this because it's basically saying that we're just, we just wanna uh, stay engaged. And so I just want, I'm just reiterating kind of what you already said about this is not approving it. And in fact, it's taking a step even further back and just saying, maintain us involved in that process. So we can, if we need to object or approve in our opinion in the future, we can do that. That's it. Thank you.
So, of course, Alex. So what I'd like to do is maybe draw a parallel to what happened when the developer wanted to do a large scale development over here in one of our neighborhoods. A lot of you were involved with that. And what we actually wound up doing was engaging with the developer until the developer basically agreed to do what the community wanted to do. I'm not saying that's gonna happen here, but what we're saying is we want to stay continuously engaged with the commercial developer. Okay? Ready for the roll call vote? Is anyone gonna make a motion? Uh, it was discussion. We gotta move on from the discussion now.
I make a motion that we, uh, adopt the resolution as written.
Yep. Now, we had this discussion.
Earlier, the motion was moved by Rogers and seconded by Rosen Lee. So the motion was, that was just discussion for the motion.
Okay.
Um, so for this, I'll do, I'll conduct a roll call vote just because there was, uh, testimony from both board and residents. Um, so when I call your name, please use the microphone for the vote. And again, this is to support the resolution as written, as discussed in the, in the discussion. Uh, Board Member Plomin.
Support the resolution.
Got it. Board Member Gauss online?
Support.
Board Member Borja?
Support.
Board Member Espino? Use your microphone, please.
Support.
Board Member Rogers?
I support.
Board Member Rosen Lee?
Aye.
Board Member Tainan is, or you online?
Support.
Board Member Valerio?
Support.
And Chair Clark?
Abstain.
With that, that is a count of eight ayes, uh, no nays, one abstention. The motion carries to support the resolution. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, board members. And thank you, Alex and Neil, for continuing to, uh, work your way through that. Moving on to the third resolution. Consideration to adopt the resolution of calling on Marine Corps Base Hawaii and Hawaii Department of Health to conduct comprehensive lead and antimony testing in and around the Puulaua Range Training Facility to evaluate potential impacts to the public. Mr. Plomin, are you the lead on this?
Thanks, Chair. Uh, this is a resolution that was produced by the Military Affairs Committee in, um, after, uh, as decided in our last meeting. And, um, it does three things. It calls on the Marines to do more comprehensive testing on the range and in the area in between the range and the homes. It calls on the Department of Health to do more comprehensive testing in the areas where homes are, in the beach park, playground, and in the vicinity and downwind of the range for windborne, uh, migration of lead. And it supports the working group that has been established by the House Representative, uh, uh, or renewed by Representative Rezota. And I can read the resolution if you'd like, Chair, as everybody had a chance to read it. Okay? Just the bottom, just the bottom line. Okay. Therefore, be it resolved. At the Ever Neighborhood Board, number 23, calls on Marine Corps Base Hawaii to conduct comprehensive on-range lead and antimony testing, including along the western fence line bordering nearby homes and parks, the operational side of the impact berms of all ranges in groundwater monitoring wells and across the broader range property to accurately and fully assess the full extent of contamination that exists on PRTF. And be it further resolved that the board calls on Hawaii Department of Health to conduct comprehensive testing of lead and antimony in, one, dust collected from homes downwind of the range, soils from Puulaua Beach Park and neighboring residential properties, and three, fish and limo from waters fronting the adjacent, fronting and adjacent to PRTF to evaluate off-range lead and antimony migration and protect community health. And be it further resolved, the Ever Neighborhood Board recognizes the importance of and fully supports the Hawaii State House District 40 PRTF Working Group in facilitating scientific investigation, community engagement, and evidence-based decision-making to protect public health, marine ecosystems, and the cultural and natural resources of Ever Beach. And be it finally resolved, send it to everybody.
Mike, you wanna make a motion or?
Well, I approve we pass it, but discussion.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, Mike, Plomin made the motion, uh, member, uh, Cory Lee.
Can I just make a statement?
Uh, second it.
So something that's going, um, all these documents that we're dealing with and we're not reading fully is because everything's online now. So the Neighborhood Board Commission has reached the 21st century. And so all this, so if you go to the agenda online at the NCO website, it'll have a link and it'll have a link to a Google folder, and you'll be able to read all these documents. So the next time you come to, I'm just learning this now myself in the last couple of meetings. So now when you come to a meeting, if you're gonna come, uh, you pull up the agenda online, you can click on all the stuff that's on here. So you can be, if you wanna be involved and, and have, uh, questions, um, then it's a good way to, to learn before you come here. Because you, you can see that we have a lot to do on the agenda and we're trying to just bust through it. So thank you.
Any discussion? None from the board? Discussion from the community? Ms. Rojas?
Saloha, Tara Rojas. Yay. Exactly what you said. You know, the other information is there online. I know I can't look there, so I gotta keep looking here. But it's, it's, it's about time because this has been on years worth of Neighborhood Boards, Board Meetings. And for this to at least have a resolution for them to get started, what we known for, and you've all been telling them for the past, I don't know how many years, like literally years, it's time that this resolution, yes, gets passed through. And I'd like to add on, you know, I don't know if you can amend it now, but even that to put in there about moving, actually finally moving this in there, you know? Because it's been so long just to get to this point. So can you put it in there now? So the urgency, the urgency. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Rojas.
Uh, Chair?
Uh, wait, wait, Alex, uh, I got you coming up next. Uh, Cory's at the lectern.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. Um, like Tara said, I was, that's took the words right out of my mouth. We've been going on years and years with the military. Testing the waters, testing the sands. I postponed my kiki fishing tournament two years now because of the water was tested as sad. That's a positive for lead. I don't want the kids to touch the fish. So it's on postpone now. So please get this going and see where it comes out. I was in contact with what's his name for the past years from the shooting range. So I don't know if they're gonna test the soil again, but it was tested positive for lead. So, yeah, let's get this going so I can hold tournaments again. Mahalo.
Thank you, Cory. Uh, Alex, you're up?
Yeah, I just wanted to say this, I mean, this is the part we have. Trying to steer.
Uh, Alex, you're, you're breaking up. Hear me?
Sorry?
You're breaking up on this little, can you get closer to the microphone, maybe?
Yeah. Um, I was just gonna say that, um, yeah, that I'm, I'm glad to hear the support for this and we, we've all been waiting a long time. I did wanna recognize that we already passed a resolution saying that the whole range needed to be moved. And we really, really want this one to be specific to additional testing so that we can get and urge the working group and the members of that to really focus on making that happen. And, uh, just being, so it's much more acute. But I agree that I think this is a crucial step to, uh, put pressure on Department of Health and the Marines to do a lot more testing than the, the very minimal testing that they've done along the berms to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Yeah.
Uh, for this resolution, for the board to adopt following the discussion, I would do a voice vote. It seems you're pretty widespread that everybody supports the resolution. So all in favor of the resolution being adopted, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Any abstentions?
One.
Chair?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, that approves the motion with the roll, with the vote of eight ayes, no nays, one abstention.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. And thank you, members of the community, for voicing your concerns. Moving on to the final, uh, consideration to adopt resolution. This is for the Hawaiian Immersion School. Uh, we have Andrea, you're up. Is it Andrea?
Aloha, mai kakou, Chair Clark, uh, the members of the Ever Neighborhood Board, Senator Favela, and the community. I am Andrea Diaz Machado. I am a Makua. I'm a parent of a child who goes Kekulakaiopuni o Kapole. I'm also the Pele Kikena, the president of Ke'alohe o Eva, which is our parent and community advisory and advocacy organization.
Did you wanna present at the lectern? Uh, if you have documents that you wanna follow? A little, a little easier there.
So yes, I'm, uh, um, the president of Ke'alohe o Eva, which is our parent and community advisory and advocacy organization for Kekulakaiopuni o Kapole. I'm also a founder of what became Kekulakaiopuni o Kapole to address a 40-year gap in lack of access to secondary education for the Eva community. Um, I'm here asking for your support in our resolution that does stand in solidarity with the Pearl City Neighborhood Board that passed a similar resolution and the Kapole Neighborhood Board to support the expansive, expansion of Kekulakaiopuni into a K-12 school. This school would, uh, this school would service all Ha'omana Kaiopuni, all, all Kaiopuni students in the Leeward and Central Districts. Um, you may know that there is an exacerbating need for and demand for Hawaiian immersion education. Many of our students continue to travel to Anueinoe in Palolo or to Kamakau in Kaneohe, and it's not sustainable. So many of them will drop out of immersion altogether because there isn't a school for them. We fought very hard for our kula. Uh, we just found out literally the Friday before school started that we were gonna have a Papa Eiva, a ninth grade at Kapole High School. Um, so we have grown 285% from year one to year three. We started with seven Ha'omana in school year 2324. My son is a Ha'omana of this trailblazing class. And in school year, the current school year, we have 27 students Papa, uh, Papa Ehiku a Eiva, so from seventh through ninth grade. Uh, why this is important is because we need a school where our students can learn Maka'olalohawai'i and learn about the place and learn the Mo'olalo of this place. And so that they can be protectors and alohaaina protectors of the Kai, of theaina. Um, and that's all science. That's all math. It's not just learning a language, which there's nothing wrong with that, and that's very important. But that is, we need to dispel that myth that learning through Olalohawai'i is learning through a language, but you're learning content. You're learning math, social studies, all of these things that our kids need to learn to thrive. Um, so yeah, we, we ask for your, your support. Uh, and this political will that we, we need to really kind of build this collective momentum of the importance of Hawaiian immersion education. We also need to return our students that have traveled so far back to their communities to learn. Yeah, so we need to ehoi kawai. We, we, we need to return the waters and the vawai, the strengths of our communities back to their place. And that was said earlier, right? This is what we have, our language. Olalohawai'i is how we see the world. And it unlocks things about Hawaii that Hawaiian language speakers have. And I wanna add with Chief of War, I feel like that has added a lot of pride in Olalohawai'i that it, there, the subtitles are in English. So this is a way for us to have a kula that's not a part of a program within a larger English school. Many times, we're an afterthought. We have to fight for many resources in the DOE to be, to have equity in education. And we don't have equity in education. That is the truth. So having a self-contained school where our children are learning and being in Olalohawai'i all day long is something that is really our constitutional right from the state constitution. And, um, we ask for your support with our resolution. Mahalo.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, if you could just stay by the microphone for a second, I have a question for you. Why is this resolution needed?
Why I think it's needed, that's a great question. I think, um, we, 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 we need to demonstrate the, the support of community boards to support us in our engagement. So as, so, um, so when, you know, we, we plan to go to other neighborhood boards as well and ask for their support. And our plan is to present that to the legislature and to say, you know, um, this is the support that we're getting from the ground with, with community leaders. And I think it, it, I feel like it leverages our, um, our case to have the support of community leaders from different neighborhood boards that can help to mobilize resources and advocacy for us to bring our kula to fruition.
So just to be clear, you already have what, something at Kapole High right now, right?
We, yeah, we just started our first high school class.
And so you want to expand. So what is the ask that you want from the legislature?
A K-12 school.
Okay, so you're asking for funding or just, are you asking for the approval from, uh, the Charter School Commission and the BEO to be able to expand?
All of that. All of that. We're, we're not a charter school, right? So we are a Kekulakaiopuni within the Department of Education. Yeah, so we are part of the Department of Education. So right now, we are a, a school within a school with, which many Hawaiian immersion programs function that way. But we, we know that the need and the data shows that we should have our own school. We need to show the demand. the demand and we need to show the political will. Many people in the community don't even know we exist. And if they knew, they would send their keke to our school, right? But there isn't active, so the, the numbers I shared with you is not, it's absent of active outreach from the Department of Education. This is very grassroots.
So, yeah, well, I'd like to point out, uh, for member Rosalie, it says, in the resolution, it says, it be resolved that the Eva Neighborhood Board supports the establishment of additional Hawaiian immersion feeder schools and a K-12 Hawaiian immersion school to meet the need and demand for Central or Leeward students such as Charter School Commission Hawaii. So I, I think that's the overall ask that, that.
It says a charter school in, in there?
It does. It says such, such as Charter School Commission Hawaii.
That's a, that's a, that's a typo. But yeah, so, I mean, we support charter schools, but we are not a charter school. Yeah.
Well, they're saying such as charter schools. I think it's, it's referencing as an example.
Gotcha. Okay.
I just want to.
I'm, I'm reading the one off of the website. To your point.
Chair?
Yes.
I just want to say, thank you. I'm so excited by this. Uh, I cannot tell you how long I wanted something like this. Because for the longest time, our Leeward students, of the only high school students that they want Hawaiian immersion, had to go all the way into town to get Hawaiian immersion.
Yes.
So to hear that we have one on our side of the island, it is so exciting. Thank you so much.
Mahalo Nui. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, you said you, you mentioned that you're not planning on being a charter school, correct? If this gets, so what, what umbrella would that, you'd be like a public school or?
So we are currently in the, with a part of the Department of Education.
Right, but if you were able to do your own school, you mentioned.
We would still be a part of the Department of Education. Yeah. Yeah, we, you know, people often ask us why we're not a charter school. And I feel like we need to hold the Department of Education accountable to Hawaiian education. Yeah, so I feel like that's a really important thing.
Yeah, I was just wondering to be if it's tuition based or anything like that, but you.
No, it's.
Yeah, I, I used to be a vice principal for like 12 years. I just have some questions on that.
Oh, that's great questions. Mahalo.
Okay, Corey, did you want to say what the? Opening up, uh? Any other discussion? You good? Okay. Any members of the community or elected officials or elected officials, which, which one?
Elected official for the people.
We got to start the time, Senator.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, I'm 100% buying this. And to answer your question, the reason why she's not trying to be a charter school, that's the reason why the DOE flanked Hawaiian Studies and Language by opening up charter schools so they don't have to take the responsibility of having it. So since I've been in that square building, we've been advocating to have studies from K to 12. And mine one was to graduate high school, you got to speak fluent Hawaiian and write in Hawaiian as one of your requirements to graduate. But again, I got deflected. Still, what about the military? But let's put it this way, the visitors that come here from the military and other visitors love speaking Hawaiian more than some of the local kids. Believe me, they wouldn't have a problem if that was a requirement. But there's excuses. The other excuse that I got, and I'm saying excuses, we don't want enough teachers. That's not true. We do. We have a lot of teachers. That's how we got the charter schools. But the DOE don't want to insert it into the DOE because they can flank it and say, oh, if we do Hawaiian Studies and Language, then what subjects are we going to get rid of? Okay, when you took away our language, what subjects did you have put in? Because they took away our language a long time ago when it was in a DOE. And they had put it in something. Back in the day when I was going to school, you had to take French, Spanish, excuse me, and Japan, Japanese, before you could graduate. You had to have one of the two languages. Hawaiian was never offered. It was my seventh grade year is when they took all the textbooks out and forbid us to have any kind of Hawaiian Studies going forward. That's why when she came to me, I'm happy about it. I'm happy that Kapole is, is spearheading this whole thing. But I want all the schools to do something like this in the future because K to 12 should be. And I'm going to tell you guys why it's important. That these kids that speak, not just the Hawaiian, native Hawaiian kids, to know the culture and know your place, give your responsibility. What we have here right now on the west side is no responsibility because they don't have an identity. We have an identity crisis over there, and that's the problem. They don't know where we're from. And that's the best thing about Hawaiian Studies and Language because you love the land and you love the culture because we are the host culture. And it's remember, Hawaiian is the first language, and English is our adopted language.
Mahalo, Senator. Thank you, Senator. Any other additional comments from the community?
Aloha, Tara Rojas, Eo. That is the most exciting, I think, item I've ever heard in, with any of these meetings. And it's with that mindset that I come to these meetings and been speaking up on all of the issues in, like, go down the whole agenda, all of them. And it's just a breath of fresh air that, that should be breathed in by everybody. It should be the breath of this place. We're in Hawaii, you know? And so just, um, I'm glad to hear that, that Corey, that you had said you're excited for this as well. But the question you had asked, well, you know, why is this needing the resolution? And just like how you said, because it's an afterthought, that's literally the thought process through the indoctrination, through these years of the military presence militarization, through the colonization, through the profit over people. It's been that. So this is so, this is very much needed. And I, I just wanted to add in, if you could put in there in the curriculum for part of the requirements to come in here into these meeting spaces, the neighborhood boards, to go to the legislature, to go to the planning commissions, to go to the county councils, to go to the, because, oh, can you put in there just HCDA Kalaila Master Plan is coming up? So September, that meeting is coming up, this year's going to be in November. And then the only one speaking, and they don't listen to just me. I've been trying different varieties, different avenues, different ways to tackle it. They only give you like three minutes. There's no dialogue unless somebody asks, and that's it. And they just say, okay, yes, and then they. So if you can put it in there, you know, just to see like the amount of people, sorry, here. But that's even like that kind of like little, little things they can't, you know, eye to eye, that, that makes a difference. So if you can even put in here, the, the, the education that you're going to be doing even into neighborhood boards, not just to present it, but even the members itself to have of that mindset. So everybody really needs the Kalanai mindset.
Thank you.
And it's to the Inoa and the O'lelo. Mahalo. Yay, Eo.
Thank you, Tara. Okay, and with that, seeing no other comments, seeing no one online? Okay. We'll move on to a voice vote, sir.
For the voice vote, just before, it's Andrea, right? Was the mention earlier about the, the typo, is that, was that actually a typo? Or was it clarified that we're good to go without an amendment?
It's clarified. And the hard copy, uh, it, it has the preferred language.
Just wanted to clarify that for the record, just in case we need an amendment.
But we do need to drop the, the final copy into the drive, just to make sure.
Um, so we'll take a voice vote for the board to adopt. Wait, yeah, for the board to adopt the resolution. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Over to you, Chair.
Yay. All right. Okay, moving on to section five, presentations. And we have on schedule tonight four. Sometimes people don't show up for these, so I just want to make sure before we head into them uh, that we have all four presenters here. Representative Perusso's office, okay? Nate Sarota?
Yeah.
Okay, Office of Hawaiian Affairs, okay? And every surf club. Okay, all right. Okay, so move on with the first presentation, harmful effects of pesticide use in Hawaii from Representative Amy Perusso's office. Take it away. You have about eight and a half minutes.
Hello, um, I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity for letting us present. Um, my name is Olivia Eagle and I'm an intern at the Office of Representative Perusso, and I'm here with Ella Alexander, who is also an intern, and our office manager, Yvonne Yarrow. So we're here to present about the pesticides in Hawaii and how they affect your neighborhood and also ways to help protect environmental and human health in our communities. So to start off on a baseline, pesticides are substances that are designed to kill and deter pests. And this can include insects, weeds, fungi, and rodents. These can be chemicals, synthetic, or biological, and it should be noted that chemical is more toxic than biological. Um, I will, there is also a difference between general use pesticides and restricted use pesticides. I will be referring to general use pesticides as GUPs and restricted use as RUPs. And today, our main focus is going to be RUPs. So what are RUPs? RUPs are different than GUPs because they require a certification for the purchase and use. Whereas GUPs can be bought and sold over the counter. An example of this would be Roundup. These are restricted to the, due to the fact that they have significant environmental health impacts. And these are mostly commonly sprayed in North and Central Oahu as well as West Kauai. Um, in 2018, Hawaii State Legislature announced Act 45, which stated that starting in 2019, RUPs must be reported to the Hawaii Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity. And they also implemented 100-foot buffer zones around schools. So some examples of pesticides are 13D and metamethionine. In 2019, over 175,000 pounds were sprayed. This is a groundwater contaminant that is very prone to drift. It's also a carcinogen, which means that it can lead to long-term health impacts such as cancer. It's toxic if inhaled, so it can also lead to respiratory impacts, dizziness, nausea, and vomiting. We also have metamethionine, and in 2019, 30,000 pounds were sprayed. This is highly prone to drift. It can drift up to a mile. And if inhaled, it can cause weakness, blurred vision, cramps, pupil constriction, sweating, lower the pulse, and also muscle tremors. So here we have some exemptions to Act 45. Neonytocinoids are a common used pesticide in Hawaii. They fight off the invasive species of the coconut rhinoceros beetle. These are currently not classified as an RUP, so they're not subject to reporting. These are also very toxic to our native pollinators, birds, and aquatic species. And these are systemic, which means that it is injected into the roots or seed of the plants, and it makes the whole plant toxic. And most of this is going to be lost in the soil, so it's very detrimental to environmental health. We also have experimental field trials, which is where major companies such as Bayer, also known as Monsanto, and Syngenta test GMO crops on Hawaiian lands. And this can have adverse consequences on our agricultural resources. These also may be exempt from reporting. Hawaii Alliance and Progressive Action is looking into the details of this right now. But even if they are reporting, it's very easy for them to spray large amounts and ignore the rules because it's easier for bigger corporations to face the consequences. So as you can see, Act 45 is a good start, but it's insufficient for our needs. Our current buffer zones are only 100 feet, but metamethionine travels up to a mile, as I stated before. This also doesn't properly address the Federal Insecticide, Fungicide, and Rodenticide Act, which requires applicators to follow the rules on the label. But since little oversight is made, it's very easy for them to cut corners. An example of this would be if a rule states that you can only spray in certain windy conditions. Um, maybe one day it's windier in the morning, but not as windy at night. Due to the fact that in Act 45, it doesn't state you have to put which time you applied, you can say that you sprayed in the afternoon when in reality you stayed in, you sprayed in the morning, excuse me. Overall, it's just very unclear. This also nullifies school buffer zones because it only applies during school hours. And there is no mandated environmental testing, so applicators can ruin the land and then pass it on to the next owner. So there's also a lack of accountability there as well. So here we have a graph. At the very top, there's the form that applicators have to fill out annually. And the green box is, um, the stuff that they have to, that they're required to fill out. And in the white is stuff that they're not required to fill out. So the white would be like time applied, the crop, and then the green would be the county which they applied in, stuff like that. On the bottom left, we have a quarter on, or I'm sorry, a picture of where pesticides have been sprayed. The darker red is the areas where pesticides have been highly sprayed in. And, um, the yellow to orange is where they haven't been sprayed or not as sprayed in. On the bottom right, we have a closer map of here in Eva. And this looks like one big parcel, but it's actually three different parcels. So the one north of the golf course, there was nine different pesticides sprayed 50 times. The one in the middle, uh, Irokus Road. And, um, there's a blue line up at the top there. So that one in the middle, there were nine different pesticides sprayed 80 times. And on the top of the coast, there was eight pesticides sprayed 46 times. And then to the left, although it may look small, over towards East Kapole, there were 16 pesticides sprayed 457 times. And then here is another map of the school zone. So the black dots are going to represent the schools. The yellow circles are going to represent the school buffer zones. And then again, we have the orange parcels. So this is very alarming because as you can see, Holomua Elementary School is overlapping that middle parcel that I talked about earlier. So it is within a quarter mile of the buffer zone. And I would urge us to advocate for larger buffer zones to protect ourselves and also our keke. So here we have some current ideas for our 2026 session. Our main priorities are establishing better reporting systems to enhance and more detailed and accurate reporting. Also to increase buffer zones, not just in size, but in frequency as well. We're looking at, um, increasing up to a quarter mile to half a mile, especially because some of those pesticides can reach up to a mile. And then also including community facilities in those buffer zones, so not just schools, but also hospitals, libraries, et cetera. Also classifying neonics as an RUP and transparency and labeling. When something says Hawaii grown, it may mislead people to believe that it's organic. But just because it says Hawaii grown, it does not mean that it is organic. So how you can help? Consider adopting resolutions. Right now, our office is working on a resolution and we'll happy to be, send that to you once we're done. Also, uh, share your experience and testify, hold community meetings, sign up for emails, contact your elected officials, educate about pesticide use in schools, and stand with farmers, um, support locally owned organic farms, and also help farmers transition into more organic, sustainable practices. We also wanted to share about another opportunity, Rewild Your Campus is an organization that focuses on reducing pesticides, especially in schools. They have a ground up advocacy, advocacy bootcamp coming up on August 19th from 11 to 2:30. And this is a virtual training that looks at pesticides and its effect on environmental health and provides participants with advocacy and organizing skills to enact change. You can register by scanning the QR code. And overall, this is just a great way to get the community involved in RUP use, especially in schools. And then here we have some quick links. We have the HAPA website, the Canva resources, and also a map series that is created by the HAPA website, um, using data from 2019. That's all we have.
Thank you. Did anyone want to zoom in on the, um, QR codes or anything like that? Okay. That's. Okay, you get the, okay, okay. Uh, any questions? Excellent presentation, by the way. Thank you very much. Very informative. Any questions for members of the board?
I have one.
Okay, Mitch, wait one. We're going to go with, uh, Mr. Plowman and then, uh, remember Tananis.
Thank you, Chair. My, my question would be, um, do we know to what extent is, is any of this tracking, um, the military's use of pesticides just upwind of maybe our neighborhoods?
So in order to spray restricted use pesticides, you do have to be registered as an applicator. So I would assume that the military people would be registered if they were spraying, but it's definitely not confirmed. And then one problem we definitely do want to address in the future is fixing the reporting system because it is very flawed and vague, and that's definitely something we want to look into. So we can also get a more clear answer for you later as well.
For member Tananis and then, uh, Mr. Rogers.
I just have a quick question. Um, have you guys ever took a, any analysis on the termite treatment? Because being that they use those pesticides, you know, at our homes that go seeds into the groundwater or into the concrete, and it's right, right adjacent or connected to our homes. Have you guys had, had any analysis on those pesticides?
Aloha, board member. So yeah, so we've had meetings with the wood preservers folks. In the past, Representative Peruso has introduced a neonicotinoid bill. And from the wood preserver's perspective, they would claim that the neonicotinoids don't leach into the water, leach into our soil or the groundwater. However, our research shows that there is potential for leaching, especially due to like environmental concerns or environmental like wear and tear, rainfall, UV light, just environmental effects on structures and weathering, natural weathering. And we can share those resources with you folks if you're interested. We've compiled some questions, some frequently asked questions from neighborhood boards, and happy to share that with you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers, that's your neighborhood?
Yeah, I just, that big blob of land that showed the nice arc, that I'm just gonna inform people, that is the Navy land that is around the Westlock Weapons Station. And so that was farmed for, they couldn't build anything on it, but they leased it to farmers to allow farming. So I guess those farmers, because that's the, so that's all around Westlock and Eva by Gentry, the line that they stopped building houses at, because that's the explosive, I don't know what to call it.
Explosive arc.
Yeah, the explosive arc for the Westlock Annex. So thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Any other questions or comments from members of the board? Comments from members of the community?
Aloha, Taro, has Mahalo Nui, you know, for your presentation, because this is super serious. The CRB and what you just all asked about as well from the termite treatments, our house just got treated as well, and they said the same thing, that it's not, is of no concern. However, there are opportunities and solutions available. So I just was wondering, am I allowed to just kind of look back?
Yes.
Okay, so I just, if it's possible as part of the follow-up, I guess for this, if maybe the treatments, I know there's like the orange oil type of treatment or natural treatment for fumigations and what, you know, the treatment of the wood, and also for the CRBs. Because again, you know, you just presented that they're using it on the new. Now, they're not following up, because we've been to enough meetings, you know, informally, and just with the people who are applying the actual poisons. I know this is talking about the state, but there are natural solutions. So I don't know if you follow, you know, daniante, mana'i, those type of applications as well, yeah? And to kind of incorporate it with maybe even like curriculum, yeah? So to get the youth involved, because it's a huge issue that not only you all, not only the board, not only us as individuals can tackle. It needs to be a whole community effort. And just to let you know in my last like seconds, I've been seeing, you know, posts from people I know, even for like on Maui. And different people, like they don't even like, I don't even know if they know each other, but they've been posting, you know, their stories about, man, look at this, look in Hawaii Island, Maui, the use of the pesticides in the state. And it's again, you cannot think that you cannot do anything. We can. And you cannot wait until it's too late, and it just becomes hidden into a neighborhood board meeting minutes or in the recording. It's something that we need to do now, because the new is being poisoned, and they lasted, I know, in Kahana too, all the new. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Ms. Rogers. And thank you, ladies, for your presentation. Thank you again. Moving on to the next presentation. Introducing DPR Initiative to Have More City Parks to Allow Leashed Dogs. Everyone knows it, but dogs aren't allowed at city parks. It's not saying people don't take them there, but they're not allowed there. I know when my girls were toddlers, occasionally they would trip over something sitting out there. Yes, yeah. So, oh, they're online, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Nate Throde from the Honolulu Department of Parks and Recreation. Not that they're not allowed, but there's just very few parks where they're legally allowed. So good evening, everyone. I'll jump right into it. So about a year ago, we realized that legally, there's less than 15% of our parks where you can remain in the park with a leashed or off-leash dog. And so we're looking to expand that privilege, the on-leash privilege at this time to any number of parks across the island. But we wanted to engage with you folks, with the various neighborhood boards, to see which of the park locations you would be comfortable seeing the part, the on-leash privilege expanded to. So one sec, let me. So within the letter that we sent in April, we provided both a couple of resources. You folks just seeing the green screen right now?
Yes, we are, Nate.
Interesting, okay. All right, there we go. So within the letter that we sent in late April of this year, we actually customized each of the letters to the neighborhood boards. And we provided both a list of the parks that are in your particular jurisdiction on the left side there, and then the ones that do have either on- or off-leash dog privileges. So as you can see, you folks are blessed, you have quite a few amazing parks in your district, but only one park that actually allows on-leash privileges, and that's Eva Beach Community Park. So there's a lot of potential for you folks to expand these privileges. Within this letter as well too, we created a fantastic map that showed, it's an interactive map that has both the jurisdictional boundaries of your neighborhood board and actually shows the parks that are in the area and where your one dog park is located right there at Eva Beach Community Park. So, you know, I wanted to save a lot of time to really open a discussion to you folks to answer any of your questions, because quite a bit of nuance on this. One of the things that I do want to clarify is, you know, when we started this effort, we did look at the two main concerns that were brought up, not only internally, but through discussions that we had with organizations, especially Humane Society. One of those being, what about irresponsible pet owners that don't clean up after their dogs? And then what about dangerous dogs? So for the first one, we are looking to do a pilot program to potentially have poop bag dispensers at certain park locations where there are either on- or off-leash dog park privileges. And then we're also looking at increased signage, wherever we do have those new on-leash privileges expanded based off of your inputs. And then concerning dangerous dogs, the state legislature actually passed a law that went into effect this past summer that basically codifies what a dangerous dog is and increases the penalties if a dog attacks a person or another human being. That being said, we are working with HPD to try and really firm out what the procedures are should someone call in a dangerous dog to them. Because right now, there is an interesting kind of back and forth between the police department and the Humane Society over how to best address any loose or feral dogs that they encounter. So rest assured, we are looking at pretty much every aspect of, you know, expanding this privilege. We don't want to just arbitrarily do it. We wanted to not only address those concerns, but then also get your folks' input on where you'd like to see these privileges expanded. So with that, please, any questions? I'd be happy to field them.
Thank you, Nate. Appreciate the timely presentation. Any questions or comments from the board members? Oh, I know you have a comment, John. No? No, I didn't mean that disparagingly, you know that, John. Anyone?
Nate, thanks a lot for coming here. Appreciate it. I am all for, we talked about this at the last neighborhood, our last meeting in July. I handed out a spreadsheet to all the board members to have them look at all our parks and kind of come up with a decision. So I'm hoping the next meeting we have, and with the community input, we can come up with a list of parks that we want to allow leashed dogs. And we have 10, we have 10 city parks in Eva, in our Eva community, and only one allows dogs to be leashed in the community. And I think we should, a lot of them, I think all of them should be actually, as long as it's leashed. But anyway, so that's what we'll do, and I appreciate your time with this, Nate. Thank you.
Board member Gauss, are you online? No, okay. He was calling from overseas, so. But I'm curious what the Parks Committee, if they have any comments regarding this. Are you speaking on behalf of parks, or?
I was hoping Alex.
Yeah, I think.
Alex? Alex and I have been talking about this. He's, we're co-chairs.
We can't hear you, Alex. I think your microphone's messed up again.
Basically, we've come down to the point, I have a list of parks if someone wants to see it, and we've come to the point that we're going to ask the community within this next month or two, and the board to come up with a list of parks. Well, maybe we vote on each park and say, yes, have dogs there, no, have dogs there. And with your folks' input telling us through either email or on the microphone, we'll go from there. Go ahead, Alex.
Okay. Any comments from members of the community on this matter?
Yeah, hi. So I'm not so sure if you, they still have the sign across the street, no dogs allowed. And right now, we have dogs in the park. They're part of the residents that live there. Parks that you're talking about, none of them should be. Community Park, Polo Beach Park, Palbush. Ones that we talked about is the unused parks. Right now, the city can't even take care of the parks we have. So we're gonna put on dog park out there that not going to be taken care of and maintained. So the places that we had talked about previously when I was on the board, yeah? Was the Acing Park, far end, almost closest to that turnaround where the big banyan tree stayed, at that park, but not taking up the whole park. That's going to be impossible. We don't even have parks to even house the kids playing. And don't get me wrong, I get three dogs, I love dogs, but we gotta be really smart about where we're gonna put them. The other place was the new Polo District Park by Keoni Ula, and then behind Eva, Mahiko Park, that area that's not being used, that you see the kids riding bike. Those little areas, it's fine, because people are not using it constantly. But if you're gonna make one dog park, no leash park, and the parks are highly used, I don't know if you ever went to Mahiko Park on the weekend, Saturdays and Sundays? You can't even fit one doghouse, and you're gonna try to bring dogs to the park. It's gonna be hard. So I'm just saying, be really strategic if you guys are gonna really try to do this. Find one area that they can work with the community in a sense of both. Because that's the parks that are not being used, you know. Acing Park in that area, and Mahiko Park, that small area, they're not using it. People are just riding bikes. So if you're designated, put a sign saying that's for the dogs or whatnot. I think that would work good, but if you'd say Mahiko Park is gonna be that, you guys are gonna have a hard sell.
Senator, if I can just be clear about this, this isn't about like having a dog park where the dogs are running around loose. This is about just allowing people that are gonna go watch their kid's baseball game at Acing Park, and they want to bring their dog. And so they got a leashed dog, and it's on a leash, and they bring it to the stands, and they sit it down, and they just are able to. Right now, you can't even bring a dog in Acing Park to watch your kid's baseball game. And so that's all this is gonna allow, is to allow the director of DPR will just say, yep, you can have dogs in this park as long as it's on a leash. And then you just walk your dog in, sit, watch the game, go, the kids play tennis, whatever they're gonna do in the different parks, and then leave with the dog. So it's just allowing people to bring their family members, because that's what it is, right? It's a family member to the park with them when they're playing.
Hundred percent, hundred percent supportive for that. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other comments from members of the community? See you online. I have a quick comment to make on this. I've been bitten by a dog twice in my lifetime. My wife's rolling her eyes right now. Once when I was four, a little chihuahua came running around the corner when I was at a strip mall and bit me on the leg. Another time, I was visiting a friend in the backyard, and the dog, you know, scratched behind his ear, jumped up and was patting him. And a friend of mine turned around to leave, and the dog took a big chunk out of my arm. You see the scar there. It's show and tell today. My point is, dogs are animals. And I appreciate your comments, Board Member Rogers. However, that's one interpretation of what people will hear. You know, oh, I can take my dog, and my girls played heisa soccer. I coached heisa team, not heisa, anyway, so don't want to make it seem like I was a big time coach. I wasn't. But, you know, we didn't have a dog at the time, and dogs are certainly family members. But right now, when I walk around the neighborhood, there's occasional people that let their dogs run loose. And it offends me. You know, my wife says I'm paranoid. I don't think I'm paranoid. I've been bitten too many times, and I think the community should feel relatively safe. Not that they're not responsible dog owners, but to Nate's point, and I wrote his words, irresponsible pet owners. We don't even know what an irresponsible pet owner is. What's irresponsible to you may be responsible to someone else. What concerns me about the dangerous dogs, you don't know a dog is dangerous until after he's done something very dangerous. Strike one, strike two, and then all of a sudden, they chase after them with a little loop or something like that. And someone says, well, they never did that at home, or they didn't do that in the neighborhood. Dogs act funny when they get into unfamiliar territory. So that would be a great concern of mine. I'm not saying that I'm vehemently against it. Are you marking my time there, Mr. Rogers? Okay. Okay, that's my comment. I try not to comment too much on these items, especially when this is primarily for the community, but I'm speaking on behalf of the community. How's that? For all those that have been bitten by dogs in their lives, I'm speaking on your behalf. Nate, any final words?
No, thank you for the discussion, and thank you, Senator Favella. He actually brings up a great point. It doesn't have to be an entire park where you allow leashed dogs. You have sections of a park. And consideration to parks like Eva-Mahiko District Park, where they have really robust and popular field areas. You know, that was one of the concerns that we had heard, that, you know, people don't want to see dogs urinating in field areas where kids are using it. So a possible, a good compromise could be having just the perimeter of a park be the on-leash area, typically where someone would, you know, walk a dog or where a parent would watch their kid playing Little League, would be the perimeter of the park. So that's a good compromise, so that there's not dogs traversing the park in the field areas that are used by a keiki. And then one final thing I do want to know, I completely forgot to mention. You folks are actually the last neighborhood before the Leeward Coast that has actually any dog parks. So the entire Leeward side legally does not have any city dog parks. So we've been discussing that with them as well too, but just as a frame of reference as well.
I'd also like to point out how much more densely populated this area is, though. Yeah, so a lot more pets, a lot more potential dog bites, so. Okay, thank you, Nate. Appreciate you.
Thank you, folks. Have a good evening.
All right. Moving on to the third presentation. Updates on Cultural Protection and Community Investment from the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Board is yours for the next eight and a half minutes.
Aloha, mai kako. McKenna Woodward with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Mahalo for the opportunity to share our OHA updates on our role in protecting Evi Kupuna and community investment in your neighborhood and across the Paiaina. OHA plays a vital and multifaceted role in cultural protection for the native Hawaiian community. Going to be touching on some of its responsibilities today, which span across advocacy, stewardship, funding, and collaboration. And I also wanted to point out a few handouts that we have over on the table. We have a few employment opportunities with OHA. And then we also have a couple of programs as well. Access to Home Ownership Program, and then an Emergency Financial Relief Program. So feel free to grab a couple of those. Okay, so advocacy for cultural sites in Evi Kupuna. OHA advocates for the preservation of culturally significant sites, especially areas with known or potential burials and traditional cultural properties. It often intervenes when development projects may endanger cultural or burial sites by requesting archaeological reviews in consultation with native Hawaiian organizations and/or advocating for stop work orders when needed. So like in the case of 330 Hule Road, where there is ongoing construction of a 40-unit affordable housing project, OHA fully supports Shipti's call for an AIS and strongly insists that archaeological monitoring should be carried out in the sensitive areas recommended by the applicant's contractor. Furthermore, a stop work order should immediately be issued to prevent the possibility of irreparable harm to Evi Kupuna and to allow for proper resolution on this matter in consultation with Shipti. We do next. Thank you. Moving on to legal and policy engagement. OHA participates in state and federal consultation processes to ensure compliance with the following statutes, which are set forth in this chart. 178 Oahu project review requests were received and assessed for 2025. Next to the legal process is the number of reviews performed thus far in 2025. In addition to the legal process requests in the chart, we received and reviewed three calls from beneficiaries. So OHA is actively participating in the compliance consultation process for two federal permits regarding Oahu military leases at Makua, Kuhuku, and Kavaiola, Pomojo, and the Alawai Pedestrian Bridge Project. Next. Further in our legal and policy engagement, this chart shows the number of Oahu project review requests received and assessed in 2025 by neighborhoods. So from Eva, we had 12 so far. Uh, OHA advocates for stronger laws and enforcement mechanisms to protect cultural resources. Okay, and then for Hawaiian-focused charter schools, in terms of education grants, OHA has Pumuvai Vai Na'ao, uh, which promotes the development and use of educational resources for native Hawaiian learners and schools, communities, and Ohana. So in fiscal year 2026 and '27, with um, our approved by NAM budget that we just had, OHA renewed its commitment to the charter schools across the Piaina by increasing its investment to 6.78 million. Um, and in addition to our commitment to charter schools, OHA also funds educational programs like Kiki Okaaina, uh, AI Ecoversity, Boys and Girls Club of Hawaii, and Kanuokaaina Learning Ohana, also known as Kala. There's also OHA's community grants, so Homa Hala Vai Vai Ohana and Kailulu for Ohana Economic Stability and Community Development. Um, engage in these strategies to enhance the economic development and financial empowerment of alohaui. Uh, so OHA funds support programs that strengthens OHA's abilities to pursue multiple pathways toward economic stability and cultivate economic development and in for Hawaiian communities. So some of these programs include Homestead Community Development Corporation, uh, Kaplea Community Development Corporation, Native Hawaiian Hospitality Association, uh, YNI Economic Development Council, and then Hawaiian Community Assets. Uh, we also have Kukulu Pakula, which is um, our emergency financial assistance program, and we do have some flyers over here with QR codes if that's something um, you're interested in. It offers one-time emergency financial assistance to native Hawaiian individuals and families experiencing financial hardship. So you might qualify if you have native Hawaiian ancestry, you're experiencing an emergency financial need uh, need, and you meet basic income and residency guidelines. And then here we have OHA community grants in support of health initiatives. So OHA funds uh, policies, programs, and practices that strengthen Hawaiian well-being, including physical, spiritual, mental, and emotional health, and then also strengthen the health of the Aina. Um, so these include Healthy Mothers, Healthy Babies Coalition of Hawaii, Alulike Incorporated, Waimalama, OK Kai Foundation, um, Polynesian Voyaging Society, um, and then Mauna Mauli as well, uh, and a few others. Next slide. Then, next slide. So here we have, um, in terms of investments in quality housing, uh, we support programs that advance policies, programs, and practices that strengthen Hawaiian resource management knowledge and skills to meet the housing needs of their Ohana uh, and support implementation of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act and other efforts to meet the housing needs of Ohana. Um, so these programs include Homestead Community Development Corporation, uh, Honolulu Habitat for Humanity, Tea Leaf Group, uh, and Hawaiian Community Assets, and and then we have um, our annual event support. So we also provide grants to support the operations and projects of Hawaiian-serving nonprofit organizations, and then sponsoring events that directly benefit the native Hawaiian community. So um, quite a few there includes the Mary Monarch Hula Festival, uh, Council of Native Hawaiian Affairs Annual Convention. A little further down, you have the Sovereign Council of Hawaiian Homestead Associations Annual Convention, and then the Polynesian Voyaging Society as well. And then the purpose of uh, this event sponsorship program is to provide funding support for nonprofit organizations to host events that provide significant benefits to the community. Um, and so recent annual event support includes um, quite a few. So there's the Oahu Hawaiian Canoe Racing Association Hawaii, uh, Hawaiian Islands Land Trust, DBA Hawaii Land Trust, uh, YNI Economic Development Council, and Nakamakai as well, the uh, surf contest in Makaha. And last, oh, sorry, second to last, or maybe they didn't add this slide in, so I'm gonna go a little off script here, but I did also wanna share um, our legislative priorities, uh, community survey that we just opened um, on August 1st. That's gonna be open till September 15th. So we would really love to hear from all of you, um, you know, developing and shaping public policies that have broad implications for the Hawaiian community. Um, you know, and really just hearing from you, um, what you'd like to see from us, you know. Um, and so I'll leave the QR code to that survey over on the table over there. Um, I'm running out of business cards, but I do have my email address on the sign-in sheet as well. So if you have any questions, comments, concerns, please feel free to reach out as well. Um, and that's all I have for you tonight. So mahalo for your time.
And mahalo for your presentation. Thank you. Any questions? What was your name again?
My name is McKenna Woodward.
McKenna Woodward, okay. Questions from members of the board? John?
Sure, um, Kalalaua Parklands, are you folks involved with monitoring for cultural resources with the new Parklands?
Yeah, so we have um, a compliance division, and they do process a lot of the applications that come through as far as, you know, through the planning commission and then um, through the different counties as well. So I would have to check in with them to see if they're monitoring that directly, but I would be happy to circle back with you on that. Um, but that is, you know, something generally that we monitor.
Any other questions from the board members? And in the meeting space, any online? Questions or comments from members of the community? Tara, you're coming up.
Wait. Aloha, Tararoas. Uh, all the information is great. I just had a couple of maybe like comments. If if it's possible, one, you know, because of the Inoa, the Olelo is, you know, really important. If if and when there will ever be the opportunity to include the correct Inoa instead of native Hawaiians, you know, Kanaka Maoli or Kanaka Oeivi in all paperwork in in your whole organization, because that makes a difference for for what really those who stand for true sovereignty, you know, standing on the truth, that really makes a difference. Everything that you're doing is awesome, you know, great. However, we know in the system, as I heard in the Kahalu Neighborhood Board meeting, that not all of the funding you're getting, you're supposed to gain like twenty percent from the state, and it's not even barely at like maybe two to five percent, yeah. So just that, and then the other thing I was gonna mention was about where are you? It's gonna come up when when the the army comes up to present. But did you know about the program, Army Program comment that's happening right now? And I don't see OHA in those um, consultations. There's already been five meetings. There's one more. And it's regarding for SHPOs, SHPOs and NHPOs. And that's going on right now, where they're trying to sidestep what's already in place, and they wanna fast track things. And in the slide today, I saw it said, in order to become a more lethal force. It refers to historic properties, but as far as their training missions and like their military readiness. So all of this, you know, maybe people don't see it, but I see it, and it's all connected. So I just wanted to see if you can, you know, be in those places and spaces to speak up for and to assist and to collaborate with Shipti to really hold this state and the counties accountable. Mahalo.
Thank you. Hello, that's really great feedback, and I really appreciate that. That's something that we'll definitely take back, and I think that's that's a great idea. Yeah, thank you for that. I I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And then as far as, um, you know, monitoring the the military leases and, this wasn't exactly what you were referencing, but so OHA has uh, been to several of the BLNR meetings um, about the um, you know, the leases that are upcoming um, and have been testifying and participating in that process. Um, and will continue to do so, but if there was, um, if that wasn't exactly what you were touching on, I'm happy to take that back.
Not really, but that's good that you mentioned that, because they
Tara, I don't wanna dialogue. We're we're running out, but we're running out of time here. I don't wanna dialogue. Tara, I don't wanna dialogue. This is an important topic, but we have our elected officials that we have to go through. We have community concerns. So, thank you. You can meet with her offline.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to our fourth presentation, Eva Beach Surf Club, Concerns on Haobush, also known as Oniula Beach Park. You have seven and a half minutes, Corey.
Hello, board members, members of the committee. All right, I wanna touch some subjects and concerns of uh, Haobush. I know we've been going through it, but now Uncle Gilly's back. We're caretakers. He's been a caretaker since nineteen eighty-six there. He's been there thirty-nine years. And we're just carrying on the legacy of um, just taking care of the beach, yeah. Obviously, the beach has a lot of signs and a lot of rules and regulations there, but it's a long-lost Wild West. As you can see there, right over there, you see that little circle there? None of those rules are implicated or even done there. Littering, fishing, be aware of curious surfers, where the surfers are getting caught in the fishing lines as of yesterday and every day, because overnight fishes leave their lines out. Lot of people got cut. I got cut in my mouth. Lot of people get hurt. Rules and regulations of beach use, beach closes at ten PM, five PM, but gates are open twenty-four hours. I I don't know. DPR, I know you're listening over there. Um, this park, you know, it's it's just it's horrible. Guys, I invited all you guys to the beach cleanup. Only Alex showed up. Alex picked up a bag. We picked up a couple dead dogs, cats, rubbish. We filled up a whole truck. It's past weekend. It was beautiful. Lot of people showed up to clean. It's part of this community, and it's part of our life here. This is the most beautiful beach in the world, but people pull up, eat, drop it out. Condoms, tampons, because they're having sex at night. Supposed to be clean. Finding bottles, cans over there, cigarettes, butts, condoms, dog poop. Cleanup before leaving. We need signage there on the beach, guys. This beach is wild. It's running wild, and we're here to help clean up. As you can see over there, cans are left on the side. This is just rubbish everywhere. Probably that's the dead dog we we picked up. Can you move to the next one, please? See the fishing poles there? It's right in the fishing area, and we go out. Uncle Gilly, seventy-five years old, he goes out. Five AM in the morning, we can't see the lines. A gentleman just got cut this past weekend, went to the hospital. His leash cut right in half. That could have been his leg. We talked to them. They still leave the lines out. I actually had to swim out and pull their lines out of the water, right? No drone fishing. Lines are caught with surfers, causes injuries, et ceteras. Surfers some injuries. They were previously reported to HPD, and I brought it up to the neighborhood board before. Nothing happened. Nothing's done. No signage. We need signage there, guys. We need the rules to be implicated, because it's a Wild West. There's a lot of things going on that we don't see. We clean the beach every time I pick up needles. Drug paraphernalia. Kids can step on it, but I just do it. I don't say nothing. We do it, right? So we need signs over there. Next page. Beach beautification. Every third Saturday, ladies and gentlemen, we have beach cleanup there. Everyone is welcome. Please come out. I, we have the bags. We have the gloves, uh, Augie T donated bags and gloves. Um, volunteers, we need. Potluck star, everybody bring food. As you can see, there's a lot of people showed up this two weekends ago on the uh, what? What was it? Yeah, so there you see us with the um, the truck picking up rubbish. I mean, it's just a beautiful thing. The beach is clean, but there's a lot of rubbish there. Next page. All right, houseless. Yes, there are houseless people. There's about seven families, seven tents there. In Waianae Coast, they have shelters. Do we have any shelter in Eva Beach? We care for these guys. We feed them, but it is a park just like Alamoanu. Gate closes at Alamoanu. Everybody has to be out. Rules need to be implicated. DPR, Neighborhood Board, we need to get a hold of all of this, because before you know it, it's it's bad, you know. We just didn't have a murder yet there. Well, maybe we did, but yeah, almost, right? Yeah. So do we have shelters in nine six seven zero six? Maybe the board, we should do that, because we're not trying to kick these guys out. We're trying to help them find someplace. They're all over the place. Recently, we had to get them off the beach. Put them in the back, because it's an eyesore, right? You know what I'm saying? Okay, next page. All right, stray dogs. There is a lot of stray dogs there. These pictures was taken two days ago. One, two, three. That pit bull, he's dangerous. That dog right there caught him taking a shit. There's no owners. We step on it. It's in the sand. It's horrible, guys. You guys were just talking about leashes on dogs. There's no dog leash. Whose dogs is that? Houseless? We don't know, but it's a Wild West. Look at it. They're running wild. That dog right there, as I took this picture in film, was ready to fight that dog. They didn't know each other. I was like, oh, I'm gonna get this on film, so I called HPD. HPD came, saw the dogs. They're nice enough to bring leashes to tell the owners, leash your dog. But I can't bring my dogs anymore. Our friend, her dog just got attacked a few days ago. Laurie, and what's his name? Joe Gator. Their dog just got attacked. They were walking their dog on the beach. The pit bull came out of nowhere and just mauled it. Few days ago. You know, we don't see that report, but they tell us it's oh, the owner got bit too. It's very dangerous, guys. Please, we need help. This is not about who's doing what. This is about this beautiful beach that we have in our community. You know, it it's just getting out of hand. Next page. This beach was taken care since nineteen fifty-eight. It was founded. It was just bushes. And someone found it, made a trail, made it a surfing area before it was developed. Nineteen fifty-eight, Gilbert Donald took over the surf club, made surf contests over there, made the beach, welcomed everybody. The development started taking over. And he's been there for thirty-nine years. And ladies and gentlemen, Gilbert Donald right here.
Yeah, I I've been uh, been down there for a long time, pretty much all my life. Problem I see down there, and I had to get the club back together because things was going bad. And I was asked, I say, well, you know, why you guys never say nothing to uncle? And the reason why I'm back, and what I see down there is something that when we had the club down there, it it wasn't that bad like today. I, it got worse. Uh, I called you my society. I get this thing, uh, catch the dog, put him on a leash, and we'll come get him. The dog is wild. I I, they expect me to catch one, wild dog, and then put him on a leash and tie him up, and we'll come pick him up. That was the answer I got. The problem is that we need more restrictions in there. Uh, I got a new staff of guys over here that I put together. Hopefully, they can pursue this like I talked last time. Uh, yeah, I'm getting older. That's all I know, you know. And the younger guys today, what I see is a lot of no respect. Even in the water, no respect. Out of the water, no respect. Uh, just trying to get their place, you know, where it's safe to, you know, play, play games and things like that. Uh, I don't know how this thing got so out of control, but it's not like the way we had it uh, when I had the club. Anyway, uh, the board members, the only thing I wanted to only to say was, I know the first phase is completed. It's beautiful. The grass is growing. My thing, Kurt knows. For thirty-nine years, I've been asking for a bathroom. And somehow, the bathroom never appeared, and I was told hopefully, phase two will have a bathroom there. And that's what my goal is, is hoping that that thing come true. Uh, it's just one of my wishes anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, uncle. Thank you, Corey. Any questions from members of the board? Any comments? Mr. Rogers?
So have you folks, thank you for what you're doing over there. Um, uh, back when Penny Barnes was on the board, we were out there. She was part of um, Eight-O-Aid Cleanups.
Right, right.
And um, and she and and board members were were out there a month, and and it was when there was a lot more, there were actually more encampments there than I think there is now. And so and and had chainsaws and everything out there. So Eight-O-Aid Cleanups is a really good resource. I don't know if there's
Right, we worked with them before, yeah.
So do you, do you, are you gonna ask?
Oh, we didn't reconnect yet, because like I said, he just took over again and then recreated the the club. So we're about in two to three months new, but trying to get a hold of what's going on down there. I appreciate everything in the past, Kurt, everybody did for Haobush. But now is now, because the new development coming up, and we don't wanna see it overrun. You know what I'm saying? People leaving fires, burning the fires. The kids are stepping on the coal and burning their feet. It's horrible. It's just I pick up thousands of cigarette butts, the bottle caps. It's just, how did it just flick it?
Right.
You know, it it's just, it's bad, right? So
Gotta take care of the Aina.
And then maybe now when we we can put it out every third Saturdays, everybody can come join, because it's such a beautiful thing, the camaraderie. Man, Alex was there, and you know, so crazy, man. He sat next to me for about five hours, and I didn't know it was Alex. Yeah, yeah, until he was talking, he was picking up rubbish. Is that you, Alex? I said, wow, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Until he, we were, he was talking, we was picking up rubbish. Is that you, Alex? I said, wow, yeah.
I would like to point out, as, as Board Member Rogers pointed out, I have personally seen board members, I've been at, at the, at the beach cleaning up, other board members have too.
Right.
So, you know, I, I can appreciate you singing out Board Member Alex and saying you appreciate him, but no need to really talk about the board members that weren't there because I, I didn't know about it. I've, I've been busy doing
Right, right, right. Now we're getting to know more and more people get show.
I understand what you're saying. I'm saying you can, you can probably draw a lot more, what's it saying? You, you can get more flies with honey than something else or something like that. So anyways, uh, thank you for highlighting this. Um, we'll have, Mike, did you have a, a comment or anything?
Uh, my only comment is, uh, Uncle said we need more restrictions. It doesn't sound like we need more restrictions. It just sounds like we need more enforcement.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's right. That's the correct way. Yeah. Enforcement. I mean, we can call H P D as much as we can, yeah.
You gotta wrap it up.
Enforcement. And then please, let's get a hold of the dogs, guys, somehow. It's very dangerous. I know we just talked about dogs and leashes, but take a look. When you drive in there, they're running everywhere.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, go ahead, John. Then we gotta move on.
I was just to let you know, they're in the council budget right now. There's one point six million, uh, one point six million dollars. And that's to build, there, there's, that's for planning, um, planning, it's, yeah, and, yeah, planning and design of the, of the bathroom.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Okay. Corey, go ahead.
Just wanted to follow up. So you say you called the police. Seems like the wild dogs is something that they've taken care of in other places. They say that there's a problem of people using the beach overnight, which we've seen. Okay, so I'm just curious, when you contact the police, do they follow up with you and do they, they enforce these laws at the beach?
Submit to the microphone, Corey.
Pictures, yes, they, they show up, but you know, they have heart, so they care for these people, so they offer leashes to the owners of the dogs. But it comes to a point where they keep letting it go. So the only way it works is H P D has to call Humane Society. So when the Humane Society come, they want us who sees the dog, we gotta catch it for them. Which we won't touch these wild dogs, right? So I don't know how the system will work. How is it gonna? Because that's why nothing's done because of that whole loophole.
But I mean, just, are these dogs wild or do they have owners?
Yeah, no, they're wild.
Wow. Wild. The H P D's responsibility then is to then capture them, right? It's not H S H, uh, the Humane Society's responsibility, right?
Right.
Okay, so is the police not just enforcing this?
Well, I, yeah, I don't know if it's
Can I, can I add something real quick?
The Humane Society is only gonna do it at their leash.
Yeah.
Yeah, who, who, who are they passing the leash to then?
Um, there was a, there was a gentleman that was camping on the beach or living there. And he asked, I, I was right there. I have it on video. Is this your dog? Then he said, yes, his dog, the dog, that's the dog was taking a crap.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then he said, oh yeah, it's my dog. So they say, hey, your dog need to be on leash. He said, oh, I know more leash. So he went to the car, gave the homeless, houseless man the leash and he brought the dog, but the same dog is loose over and
Okay, gentlemen, we really have to move on. We got to be out of here in thirty-five minutes. And I still have to go through government officials.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you. Okay, moving on to residents and community concerns and announcements. Um, we're gonna be a little pressed for time here, so I do want to give the community their time.
It's on.
Oh, okay. Aloha mai kau kou, o shadel konanipu kea Gregory ko'ouinoa, no nanakuli mayao, no hualama nanakuli. I am a Kamakameha graduate class, class of twenty nineteen and I currently have recently graduated from the University of Hawaii and as I represented, um, our track and field team as well. And currently I'm also an athlete on the Hawaiian Kingdom Track and Field Team. This upcoming October, Hawaii has been given the opportunity to represent ourselves as Hawaiian Kingdom Track and Field in Tonga at the Oceania Cup. This is the very first time Hawaii has been given this opportunity to represent the Hawaiian Kingdom with our Polynesian brothers and sisters. After competing in a sport for nearly a decade, I can say that, um, this is an opportunity that myself and my teammates are very proud to take. Um, and as a Kanaka Maoli, um, I take a lot, a lot of pride in this um, opportunity to represent my home, my family, my communities and, um, Hawaii itself. I'd like to pass it on to my teammate Diamond.
Aloha o Diamond fa'au Ma'alianga, kalamu kouli'i, kou'ou Ma'ali'i, nahi nahi kula niha'ano'ano' pastusin kou'ouino. First and foremost, I would like to say mahalo to the Eva Board Community or Committee and the community for allowing us to voice our efforts in our journey to go into Tonga. To briefly share a little about who I am, I am a nineteen-year-old local boy born and raised here on the island of Oahu. And I am a proud Campbell alumni, class of twenty-four, Go Sabres. Um, most importantly, I'm truly thankful and grateful or blessed to be a part of this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And I'm proud of knowing that I will be representing my Ohana and my home, um, throughout this international competition, which can change the trajectory of Hawaii and the future generations to come. So mahalo no koumanava. I'll now be passing it on to my teammate King.
Hello. My name is King Joshua Halulani Pridgen. I'm currently a senior at James Campbell High School and the youngest member on the team. Being native Hawaiian, I am honored to represent the Hawaiian Kingdom in the Oceanic Cup. It is a big opportunity for me and my teammates. We would like to thank all of our supporters to get, that got us to Tonga because without you guys, we couldn't do it. If you have any questions, you can see anyone with a black Hawaiian Kingdom shirt. If you guys could raise your hands. And mahalo to the board and the community.
Aloha, board members. My name is Tiana Ma'afala. I'm part of the Hawaiian Kingdom Track and Field Team. We just confirmed an additional sixty-five hundred dollars in donation. Mahalo to Huseko and Hawakale Charities for the sponsorship. Thank you, board members. We truly appreciate your time, the opportunity to share and your consideration of our humble request for support. Mahalo.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. How many of you remember running on track? No, just me? Okay. Moving on, residents, community concerns. If anyone else has anything else to say, if you could just kind of line up and let me know. Go ahead, sir.
Yep. Hello everyone again, uh, Joe Akana. So I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with a bill that was called, uh, um, Act Two Thirty-Six, Hawaii's Biosecurity Law Bill. If you're not familiar with it, if you're into agriculture, get ready. That bill basically says that it gives the government the authorization to come in and take anything they want to off your farm at any time they want to do that. So if you're raising animals, if you are raising pigs, if you're raising chickens, if you're raising plants, they have just signed this bill on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. And they can come in and take anything they want at any time without a warrant.
State bill or federal?
It's state bill.
State bill.
They can come in and take it anytime they want, whenever they want. On a anonymous phone call, they can come in and take your property. If you have cows, they can come take them. Horses, come take them. If they want to come into because you have too many mango trees growing, they can come take it. Okay, it was just signed into law, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Just signed. Here's what it violates. Ready? Warrantless entry, control over movement of resources, uh, constitutional conflict with the Fourth Amendment, the Fifth Amendment, the Fourteenth Amendment. And the act basically can usher in any form of tyranny it wants to at any time. They call it biosecurity. Biosecurity. What do you guys think about that? They already signed it into law. At any time they want to, they can come and get your stuff. Anytime. Right here.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Oh, that was interesting. Maybe, uh, we should, um, welcome you back next month for a presentation. So, okay, any other residents, community concerns? Seeing none? Uh, uh, I'm sorry, Mister Rogers, you have one?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, let everyone know that, uh, Hawaii Biscayne League is holding an e-bike one-on-one workshop in Kaplea on, uh, August twenty-third at nine-thirty to eleven-thirty. It's a two-hour workshop. We provide, we have like eleven, twelve electric bikes of all shapes and sizes. Um, and, um, we provide the bikes, the helmets. Mostly this is more of an informational, uh, meeting or, or workshop to explain what electric bike is, how it works, all the components. And then, uh, you get to ride, uh, several of the different kinds of electric bikes. So, uh, if you're in the market for one, you get to see that. If not, you, at least you learn what, what a real electric bike is and what the laws are and how they work. So I have a couple of these back on the back table. Feel free, it's got a, a Q R code to get you to the website. But at H B L dot org, if you go to that website under education, you'll find out and you can sign up for the workshop. I hope to see you there, uh, because I'm one of the instructors. Thank you.
That's August twenty-third. Is there a plan to, um, maybe have it on another successive month or, um, uh, at least one more time before Christmas?
Yeah, we can, we can do. I'll talk to, I'll talk to Malia, the, the workshop coordinator, but we just held one last week in Eva. And we, my wife, just, we just had two people, uh, sign up and, and we advertised pretty highly. So we'll, we'll try it again. We'll, we'll keep on working on it.
Sorry, okay. Thank you, John. Okay, moving on to other monthly reports. Uh, I would ask that those that are making monthly reports, uh, try to just give a one-liner or a two-liner. Uh, we are bumping up against some time here. Uh, of course, those that are giving these standard monthly reports, please keep in mind that you're welcome back every month. We had more presentations and we had more, uh, resolutions to go over. And we have to remember that that's what this forum is. It is for the community members. It is for the presentation of those every month, the elected officials, the government officials, they're on the menu, uh, they have a standing place on the, on the gen- agenda, not the menu. We don't want to chew on them, so, uh, we'll move forward. Uh, moving on to Hunt Communities Update. Okay, moving on to Gentry Homes Update. Did you want to read what they have, Jeffrey, or? Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to. I didn't mean to. Okay.
Okay, so, um, Sunny Rosario from Gentry sent an email with this, with a, uh, short update. Um, in the email, it, it states, um, I've been communicating with our engineer and their team since we, since last spoken to. They've continued to reach out to D T S in multiple ways to set up a meeting but have not heard back. Our lead engineer has asked another D T S member in a different section to check with the person reviewing the signal plans. Nothing's been heard back yet. Uh, when they do hear back, they will be sure to let the board know. And that's, uh, the update. That's regarding the Geiger Road light. Just for the record.
So for the community and for the board members, you remember we've been asking about the Geiger Road light in front of the water treatment facility for quite some time. Uh, apparently there's some back and forth going with Gentry and City and County. I've been trying to get some fidelity on that, but this is, this is what it's come to. Senator?
Yeah, so I talked to Debbie, Debbie Looney, and Debbie Looney is going to be leaving Gentry soon. So I don't know why D T S is not being responsive. They're very responsive when I call. I'm not sure, so I'm gonna facilitate that meeting because the reason why the Gentry saying that that road cannot, like, can't be put in. And now this D T S, the city is putting in provisions to put on camera with the light. So I didn't hear nothing back from the city saying that is accurate. So I didn't doubt Debbie because I seen Debbie at an event. But the bottom line is you guys gotta keep on putting the pressure because, um, I don't know why D T S wanted to put a light camera there. And it's gonna change the whole dynamics and we're gonna have to wait longer. So my recommendation to the board is tell D T S, put up the light and have the city pay for the cameras in the future. But I put up the light because lives is more important right now. They want camera. Understandable. But please, you guys need to help me on that.
We will take that under advisement. Thank you, Senator. Uh, Haseko Holmes? Online?
Hi there.
Oh, hey, Lisa. How's it?
Hey. Okay, real short. I just have good news. Halea by Side Street Inn has opened, so please go check them out.
Okay.
Okay.
You want to repeat that? John Rogers didn't hear what you said.
So in our former, I was trying to do a one sentence. Okay, so in our former kitchen door area, Halea by Side Street Inn has actually opened their doors on August, I think it was August fourth. So if you guys want to check them out, they should have some really ono grinds.
Awesome. Everybody get that? Side Street Inn? Where the, okay, all right, got it. Moving on. Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it. Uh, D R Horton, O P Lee, update? Seeing none, moving on. Government officials, and again, I would ask if you could, uh, make your comments brief, would be appreciated. U S Marine Corps Base Hawaii Duty Officer.
Good evening, Chair, Board, Community. Uh, so first, I want to thank everyone that came out to the airshow. It was really successful. We loved having everyone out there. About over seventy thousand people came by, so it was a great time. Saw the Blue Angels, the Navy. Um, also, we're, we're happy to have started the Hula Working Group. So thank you to everyone that, uh, participated in that, set the scope of what the working group will do moving forward and forward progress. Um, announcement for, uh, additional progress. So at the end of this month, we're gonna put in a sand fence along the Foxtrot range at Hula Range. So for those of you that have been tracking, um, might know what I'm talking about. If you haven't, um, we are setting back some of our short bay ranges. Foxtrot has been moved back and so we're installing a sand fence to encourage, uh, or discourage erosion and encourage, uh, a berm, like a natural dune, to grow there. And that's maybe about seventy feet long. It's an immediate action that we can take now while we pursue additional actions with the help of legislature and the community. Uh, pending any questions? That's all I have.
Thank you. May I move on? Well, Mister Plowman, go ahead. No, 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 I, I just want to, I want to move this quickly, but I know this is a hot topic, so please go ahead. Thank you. Uh,
tsunami evacuation. Back, uh, when we were in hearings at the state Capitol regarding, uh, the potential request for, uh, relocation of P R T F, one of the big points was, um, Cormorant Avenue being no longer able to be used for a tsunami or any other kind of emergency evacuation. Uh, we were told and the Marines' testimony was that, um, of course, we will open that road if there's any sort of emergency evacuation. So, um, the other day when we had a tsunami evacuation impending, I gave you guys a call. I talked to First Lieutenant Haley, uh,
Haley Harms.
Haley Harms. And she called me back. She said, yep, they're gonna be there to assist you to evacuate through there. I, I reiterated, we're able to go in through that gate and use Cormorant Road. She said, yeah. When it became an ordered evacuation, I loaded up my family. We went down. The gate was, it was wired shut. And we know why, but, um, so we asked the guard, hey, can you ask the O I C to open this gate so that we can really alleviate the, the, uh, the traffic at Fort Weaver Road? And he refused. And it was only through contacting our, our, uh, House Representative that eventually, I guess, uh, the O P S O had them open that gate. But by the time it was open, it was six-thirty P M. and everybody had already beat feet. My request is that as part of your uh, disaster preparedness checklist, that you make it a checklist item that if there is an impending um, ordered evacuation, that that gate be opened automatically. Because it's one thing if you've got an eight-hour window, if it's off of Kamchatka, but if a chunk of Lanai falls in the water, we got forty minutes and a big traffic jam. So we would request that it actually be an automatic thing. And the only other thing I have, my question is, uh, we've been asking for a sound barrier presentation on what you guys had talked about, I guess it was back in April. Really would, uh, be interested in, in getting a presentation on that. Thank you.
Excellent point, Mike. Thank you very much for that. Good?
Yep, I took those notes.
So when you tried to evacuate through that gate, what was the time?
Or thirty-ish. It was right after the, they said
First, the first one. Because I got a call at five fifteen from the Colonel. Told me to let the community know, which I did on Facebook, that that gate was gonna be open. And when, when I went there, the gate was open. So I don't know, maybe you went go leave after the guy told you no. But the order was to open that gate. And it was the request because of when we was at the Capitol. We had brought it up and the Colonel was very responsive to that. So might maybe you went go just a little bit seconds early before they went open the gate. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Mike.
I, I will say, you said that we know why the gate was wired shut, but might not, everyone might not know. So do you want to? Wait.
Uh, Mike, use the microphone, please.
My understanding My understanding is a car, a drunk driver drove through it one night and it disabled the gate. And so there was a piece of fence wired across it with, in three spots. I mean, wouldn't take, that part would be easy to open with some wire cutters, but it's the cement barriers that, that I would guess would pose the delay.
Appreciate the clarification.
Thank you. One, two, three, four.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to United States Navy, one, two, three.
Peter Algo, I'm just a resident, but in regards to evacuation, if anybody looks at these evacuation map, the safe zone, as far as Iroquois Point, that's almost as soon as they leave the gate at Iroquois Point, that's the safe zone. Parts of North Road, north of North Road is the safe zone. Kamalie North is a safe zone. You don't have to travel that far. I don't know why we panic going all up Kunia Road, crazy. You know, read, read your documents, know where your safe zone is. I spent the evening behind the fire station. Nobody was there, it's only maybe four other families, because that place is a safe zone. But everybody's panicking, got to go up Fort Weaver Road, I got to go to Waiala. For God's sakes. Crazy. That's what creates all the traffic. People going home from Honolulu. They live in a safe zone, but they're going home early. Hey, Fremonty going home early. Traffic jam. Nobody's thinking.
That's an excellent point. Thank you.
I think the gate over here is kind of, you know, the guys at Iroquois Point need an access point to get out. They just got to drive out their front gate. If we go through there, we're going to jam them up. You know, we only got, and Kamalie is a safe zone. The yellow area, the extreme evacuation is even closer.
Yeah, but everybody can't go park on Kamalie, cannot, so.
There, but anything north of that is safe.
Yeah, it's kind of the same thing, though, you know, you can't, can't park, people have to go, so. But I get your point, though.
We didn't have to go to extreme evacuation, though.
True.
The yellow zone is a safe zone in this case.
Not if it's a fire.
Okay, gentlemen, let's move on. Thank you, sir. US Navy. One, two, three. Your turn.
I didn't know about this step, so I feel hurt, so thank you.
Okay, all right, all right.
All right, good evening Chair, Board members, Senator and community. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Chief Jose Hain. I'm the Media Operations SCA for Region Hawaii. And I'll make it quick, I promise. Starting with the weekly newsletter, the Molelo. If you'd like to be added to the distro, this goes out every Wednesday, please let me know and I'll be happy to get you added on there, okay? Moving along for ship tours on Saturdays, that is back. If you have a group that's interested, a minimum of seven, max of twenty. You get to go onboard from about nine hundred to ten thirty. Good experience if you haven't visited a Navy ship, especially an active one, you get to see what sailors do on a daily basis in port, okay? And same thing with the white boat tours as well. The white boats is monthly, not every Saturday. And last but not least, Lalema Navy, very proud and happy to announce that we're at two hundred and thirty-four acts of community service, getting very close to that two fifty goal before the Navy's birthday in October. And as of three weeks ago, I'm a resident of Eva, so I'll be volunteering with that group back there. It's to add to that number, not just for that, but because I'm a part of this community and proud to say that. Thank you, Senator, for any questions.
Any questions for the community? I have one question for you. Did you know that he's retired Navy, former submariner?
Oh, yeah. Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Ms. Ross.
I just wanted to say, awesome, and you know, as people, there is the relationship, but as the entity, there's not. And you know, if you all know that the case that was filed, and it was one, the tort case for the Red Hill families affected. Another case has been filed because the residents are still sick. So just to keep that in your mind, yeah? Mahalo.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Appreciate the brevity. US Army?
Good evening Chair, members of the Board, members of the community, Senator. My name is Selena Jentkowski. I'm with the US Army Garrison Hawaii Public Affairs Office. I'm standing in for the folks who would normally be here. Short, short version. Our next hiring fair is August nineteenth, that Haleamano Military Reservation. At the training room starts at eight thirty, ends at two. Our next, our training is still ongoing, mostly in Central Oahu. If anybody wants to be added to the distribution list, please call the community concern line at eight oh eight seven eight seven one five two eight. The Wounded Warrior Canoe Regatta is happening August twenty third from seven thirty to about four PM. There's going to be teams from all the services and the, the event has expanded to include the youth division and to include our Gold Star Ohana for the Wounded Warriors. And our last announcement for the month is our annual training is happening at the end of October, beginning of November. So I just want to make folks aware that there may be increased traffic and noise in the, in those couple of weeks. Pending any questions.
Any questions for the lady? See you then. Thank you very much. Now, if we, if we could.
No, I have, I have, this is important. I have a voice, so I just wanted to know, you should let people know about the Army program comment that's been going on right now. And the website, because it's on the federal register, it's going through the process consultation for community. It's denix, D E N I X dot O S D dot M I L slash Army dash P C W R. It's five of the six consultations, next week Thursday is the last one. And in there, they've been mentioned about how the MOU with the governor by the Army regarding the lease extension after the community said a big no and the BLNR said a big no to the Army's FEIS. So this is really important because the timeline, it's going up now, is regarding not only historic buildings, but regarding military readiness and the training that's happening here. So I'm just going to say this, you know, when you stub a toe, when you get your foot, a toe stepped on, it's a pain that, you know, eventually goes away. I'd rather have, you know, step on toes because I know some of you are, you know, for military. But you have to realize that the entity as a whole, the destruction and the devastation that it causes, especially here in Hawaii, is real. And so I'd rather step on a toe now, be uncomfortable, make you uncomfortable, because the lasting effects for the generations that kick you here is forever. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we're going to truncate the agenda a bit because we have to be out of here very shortly. Since Senator Favela is in the building, I'm going to have him go ahead. Senator, I trust that you'll make your remarks brief so we can allow the ones online to maybe make theirs even more brief. Appreciate you being here in person, sir. Can we keep it to two minutes? Maybe ninety seconds?
All the information for the community, but if you want me to speed it up, Iroquois Point is going to start their bus services. I talked to John from DTS. It will start at six forty-five, six something in the morning, for the running run. They're going to go from straight on Fort Weaver Road to Iroquois Point. And then at four, at four fifty or four forty-five, they're going to be at the transfer station, if you wanted to use that area. They're going to be there at four thirty-six to catch the bus. And it's going to go into Iroquois Point, thanks to the Colonel at the Marine Base opening the gate, having them go in. They're going to straight in, go to the turnabout area, then go down on North Road and drop the kids off and circle around to back on Fort Weaver Road. Another one I want to bring up, I want to thank Councilmember Augie and the community members that came out and voiced their concern about closing the road over there by Renton Road, by the train station. They're in negotiations and I found out today that they are no longer going to close the gate because they're in negotiations with the City and County of Honolulu. Again, we're giving a big, giving free beds away on Saturday from nine to two, we ran out of beds. So we're only giving out king and full-size mattress. But I just wanted to highlight one quick one because the culinary class, we didn't see July sixteen, was a blessing to be invited to go to that. And then Korean Veterans War Memorial, the celebration of the Korean War. And then, of course, they had the ADA Anniversary Rally on July twenty-fifth. And then, of course, we had the recognition of some of the state employees, Governors, Lieutenant Governor Sylvia Luke and Ryan Yamani, who is the director. We had guys working for the state for forty years, guys, forty years, that was accomplishment. But if not, I'm open up for any questions.
Nope.
Can you just, the road that you're talking, the gate that you're talking about being not closed is between Renton Road and FDR?
Right, the one that was on top of TV and everybody was kind of concerned, they was going to cancel two bus routes, so.
Thank you, Senator, and thank you for making it brief. I know you have a lot more to say. Thank you, Senator, for keeping it brief.
I'm going to hold my breath to next month.
It's all about the community. Okay, as we move into the next ones, I'm going to ask again, we have to try, our clock is gone, but we have to try to wrap this up within the next ten minutes. But it was important for the community, as I said, elected officials will have their time again next month. So if we could, maybe truncate it to thirty seconds to forty-five seconds for the upcoming elected officials, government officials, starting with Mayor Rick Blangiardi's rep.
Good evening Chair, Board members, Mark Udomine. Very, very quickly, a question on Coconut Rhinoceros beetles. So I'm looking for some tips, just go to crbHawaii.org. That's the CRB Response Team, and they have some tips there. Other one was regarding the delineators at Holomoa Elementary. So DTS and HDOT are working to expedite installation of those tough curbs and delineators on Kailanui Drive. The next one regarding bus route four twenty-one, Kapalino. And the question was if there could be two bus routes, a part of the nine-month pilot program instead of one. So currently, DTS, they're kind of short on bus drivers. So they'll monitor the situation for that nine months and then see if another route is needed or not.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Moving on to Councilmember District One. Andrea Tupo. See you then.
Aloha.
Aloha.
Hi, Aloha Chair Clark, thank you for your patience. I know you're going to be really fast, so let me just go ahead and do this really briefly. We're just doing a friendly reminder of the Watership Management Town Hall meeting, that is virtual, that'll be on August twenty-sixth. We do have another friendly reminder of the Kalailoa interim racetrack proposal. It'll be reviewed during the HHP Committee on August nineteenth. And also for Andrew's Presence of Paradise, so all of this was sent over earlier. But that's just my short reminders and follow-ups.
Mahalo, appreciate you.
Aloha.
Moving on to Councilmember District Nine, Councilmember Augie Toba. Nothing online, okay. Board of Water Supply, can we catch your material online? No rep, okay. No DOE rep. Governor Green. Any rep, Tara? Nope, okay. Senator Aquino?
Aloha, can you hear me?
We can.
Aloha Chair, Board members, members of the community, Nathaniel Lee represents here in the town of Aquino this evening. I'm going to keep it short, Chair. I did hand in, I did submit my report this afternoon, and with that being said, I do stand up my name frankly.
Thank you, I appreciate the brevity. Moving on to HDOT, Hawaii Department of Transportation Quarterly Report. Okay. Skipping Senator Favela, you had yours, Mike Gabbert, Senator Gabbert, District Twenty-One.
Yep, I'm here. Aloha Board and Community Members, I'll also keep this short. Senator Gabbert's Next Listen Story Meeting is on Saturday, August twenty-third, from nine to ten AM at the Kapalae High School Teachers Lounge. His guest speaker will be Dr. Keith Weiser, the Program Manager for the Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle Response Team. A Zoom option is also available by RSVP. You can just email our office and I'd be happy to take any other questions back to the Senator.
Thank you, we have your email address, we will let you know if we have any additional questions. Thank you. I'd like to circle back to Nestor, who's online for Representative Ed Case. Nestor, can you make it brief?
Chairman Clark, we'll keep it real brief, sir. His, in lieu of a quarterly report, we have his latest e-newsletter. I put it on the chat, Mr. Chairman, for you and the members to read at your leisure. Sorry to say that we were not able to hold our virtual online Talk Story Town Hall, if you will, on July twenty-ninth. If you recall, that was the night of the tsunami warning, so I thought it was not a good idea to have. We'll reschedule that for some later date, Mr. Chairman. One last thing, for those, especially who are familiar with ROTC program, I guess in your neighborhood Campbell High School. We want to make sure that the young people, men and women, are aware that Congressmen will be once again accepting applications for congressional nominations to service academies, Mr. Chairman. And the deadline for those that want to submit an application to Congressman Case is Friday, postmarked by Friday, October tenth. For those that might want to seek a nomination to one of the four service academies, Mr. Chairman. That's all, open to any questions.
Thank you, Nestor, we appreciate it. And we do have the email address for follow-up questions. Again, thank you for keeping it brief. Representative Elijah Peirick, District Thirty-nine. Representative Julie Reyes Oda, District Forty. Okay, Representative David Alcos III. Representative Diamond Garcia, District Forty-two. Okay, we'll circle back. Representative Julie Reyes Oda, rep online.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, great. I'll keep this brief, but good evening Chair and Board members. Over the next few weeks, Rep Reyes Oda and our office will be out walking the district with surveys to hear directly from the community. We'll also be mailing surveys to the few areas where we can't get to on foot, and we're happy to answer any questions or concerns.
We have the representatives' email address, repreysoda@capitol.hawaii.gov, and we will provide questions via email if necessary. Thank you, thank you for our luck, the representatives for making that very quick. Moving on to committee reports, Parks. See you then, Rick. Okay, thank you. Education. See you then, Transportation. Opo? Okay, put in the, in the drive, okay. Public Safety, Community Outreach, Economic Development, Climate Change, Hawaiian Affairs. Military Affairs. Mike? Yeah, thirty seconds. No? Okay, thank you. Announcements, next regular meeting scheduled for Thursday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-five at seven PM. Versus via webex and in person at the Eva Beach Public Library right here. Regular board meetings are broadcast every first Sunday at six PM and every second and fourth Friday at ten AM on Olelo Digital Forty-nine. We are adjourned.